Good evening, everyone. I have seven o'clock. So if I can go ahead and call the meeting to order and have everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. And with that, we will begin with the superintendent's report. Dr. Hanson.
Thank you, Dr. Burke. Members of the board community, thanks for being here this evening. Board, since our last meeting, we have tragically lost two of our young students here in Warren. Jamar- Jeremiah Cotton, who was a student at Creston, passed on June 27th, and Rodney Ward Jr., who was a student at Renaissance, passed away this last weekend on July 11th. Both young men were victims of gun violence. And at this time, I invite all of us to take a moment of silence to reflect on their lives and to honor their memory. Unfortunately, these two were many victims that have lost their lives here this summer in Marion County. Over the last couple of weeks, myself and all the Marion County superintendents have been engaging with IMPD, our local law enforcement, and city officials, helping distribute information, not only to our students and to our families. My call today to our community provided detailed information around curfew changes, particularly this upcoming weekend. Indianapolis is hosting the WNBA All-Star Game. And as you know, this is Indiana Black Expo Weekend. So a lot of activities that are taking place downtown. I saw Chief Bailey present today that they're trying to find safe places for our students that, or not our students, but our youth that may find themselves past curfew. You know, jailing our kids is not the answer, but we do need to enforce the curfew as well. I've been engaging in conversation with many of our staff, including Chief Northington, James Taylor, around actions that we can take to not only prevent but intervene sooner with our youth. Tabitha Jackson, Julie French, recently met to talk about actions that we can do as a school district. They are planning a community fair later this fall to provide resources, information, and to engage our community in this crisis. In the coming days and weeks, we will be providing some resources for our students, families, and community, particularly around gun safety. So just want you to know that we are committing to be a part of the solution. We know that investing in education is a long-term prevention for our youth. You know, I had a conversation with Gloria this evening. When they have hope for their future, committed to a career or college, then, you know, that's their focus and not other things. So, you know, I'm reminded, because we've been in this situation before, and you hear lots of conversations around gun violence and violence in general. We got to keep the conversation going. We can't just have the conversation right after it happens and then hope that it doesn't happen again. And some conversations today with Chief and Logan, really around what is our commitment? When kids don't know how to read, we teach them how to read. And when kids don't know how to do conflict management, we need to teach them how to manage conflicts. So just know that that's on our radar and our hearts and our action plan. Financial outlook, we continue to review and respond to state and federal funding decisions that are having significant impacts on our current funding sources. Matt and I have been working together. He is putting together a specific analysis to Warren that we'll share with you, board, and our local and state legislators to make sure that they know what the specific impact is. Kevin and a couple of you were a part of a tour over the summer. And Senator Jackson asked us to provide, you know, the impact that that has on our district. So we'll be getting that information to her. Matt and I are working with Dennis Jarrett on a series of communications that will go out to our staff and our families and community. We are creating a podcast that we will release the first of August as one of those communication platforms. So that will be coming to you soon. All right, on a brighter note, board, I shared with you earlier that our preliminary I read three results, we have set a new high standard in Warren Township at eighty-three point five three percent. Yes. And I'm really excited and proud for our teams. All of our elementary schools surpassed eighty or higher for the very first time. So congratulations to them. Just a reminder, board, those results are still embargoed until the August State Board, so we won't be able to release anything until August. I learn in front of you and in your email boxes are our I learn results from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We are very encouraged with the growth in most of our areas. And I would say we're equally as discouraged in a couple areas with lack of growth. We've already shared these results. Ryan's already shared these results with principals. And we will be spending Friday morning breaking down the data and creating personalized improvement plans for each of our schools. Board, we will schedule a work session with you so that we can further disaggregate this data and share our plan for improvement this school year. On some spotlight notes, Sixteenth Street Soul performed the National Anthem at the June 25th Indians game. I want to give a shout out to Brian Long and Kelsey Corum for the work that they pour into our students in this group. They will also be singing the National Anthem at the July 23rd evening game and the August 5th baseball game. So if you get a chance, go out and check them out. Yeah. Shout out to our kindergarten teachers and elementary leaders for holding their kindergarten camps this year. I don't know if we keep a record, Allison, but I feel like this was one of our best attended years at three hundred and seventy-five kids. And we're not even done yet. I love it. I love it. But, you know, from going to the cafeteria, from getting on and off the bus, from lining up, going to the bathroom, washing their hands, sitting in class, just a great opportunity to give them that first initial exposure to their new school. Back to school celebration tomorrow, Thursday, July 17th, at MCRC starts at five o'clock. I would get there at four thirty. It's going to be a jam-packed evening. I found out tonight, we have fifty-three community service providers participating in that, so looking forward to that. Kudos to Regina Murray and her team for putting that together. On Saturday, New Beginnings Fellowship Church will be hosting their backpacking community celebration from eleven to two. Family Engagement Liaison, Malcolm Benel, and I will be there representing Warren. Also Julius Brentz, Warren grad, current Colt, will be in attendance. Our K eight back to school nights are Tuesday, July 22nd. Board, our opening day pep rally is July 23rd. Doors open at seven AM. Event starts at eight AM. It is a Western theme, so get out your boots. Remember, board, our first day of school is Thursday, July 24th, for kindergarten through ninth grade students only. Our sophomores, juniors, and seniors do not attend school that day. Their first day is Friday, the 25th. They will make that day up as a learning day later in the year. And that is my report for this evening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hanson. And with that, we will go on to board comments, starting with Gloria, please.
Hello, everyone. I tell you, it is so good to be almost to the opening of our school year. I am really excited. The children are excited. And it seems like we're going to start off with a blast, especially tomorrow when they come to Morehead, you know, and we treat them with all the things that they may need to start out the school year. And we want to start off happy and we want to end up happy. So I'm just going to say, we're going to have a happy year this year. And I just wish everyone the best. Thank you.
Okay, good to see everybody's here. Lovely people out there. Yeah, I too want to say, you know, we were starting off the school year, a new school year, a little forward to that. I know it's going to be a lot of fun. We had a lot of learning. A great job on these I read reports, I read results. Great job. I was also a part of that Warren High School Walker Career Center tour. Thought it was outstanding. It kind of like grew day after day after day. More people started showing up. I called around and said, hey, you know, we're going to be there, but what about the others? And they, Senator Jackson surprised us by showing up. We didn't, we weren't expecting that. So, you know, the whole dynamics of the tour kind of changed a little bit. But she was wonderful. You know, Ms. Taylor, high school principal, did a great job in giving us an orientation. It didn't start out like that initially. We were thinking we were going to get the second team to give us a briefing, but we had first team give us a briefing. And she was super. Second team's good, too. No question about it. Bree was already prepared and was good to go. I wasn't expecting to see Dr. Rogers there. I mean, this is vacation, guys. You know, we're asking a lot to have somebody come off their vacation to come on in and do some stuff. I don't think he would have missed that for the world. And had a chance to show off the Walker Career Center, which was a revelation for me, because I haven't seen a lot of the changes that have gone on since the last time I was able to see the Walker Career Center as an invite tour. But this was really super. And it was good that they had a setup so that they showed us all the good stuff. We didn't have to worry about walking over some of the construction stuff and getting dirty and that kind of thing. But what they showed us was outstanding. So it was really a great job. I am on the Development Association, Warren Township Development Association. And when I, I'm going to start bringing some tidbits of information that comes out of that that talks about the growth of our community and how the growth of our community means more kids and ADM. How about that? But anyway, I'm going to start doing that. We had a short meeting this last time. I don't know if you guys know about Wawa, a restaurant gasoline station sort of a thing. It's like a get-go on steroids. I had the first chance to, how do you say, experience Wawa when I was in Florida last year in Orlando. And it was a super operation there. I had a chance to go to the one up in Noblesville. One's coming here. We surely don't know exactly where it's going to be located, but it'll probably have a footprint that covers Cumberland and Warren Township, if you know what I mean, right on that border, like south of Seventy, north of Washington, Mount Carmel, Post Road, somewhere in there. So we're looking forward to that coming to our community. Remember KK? Who was our student representative maybe two years ago, two years ago. I ran into her at Kroger's. She was banging on the cash register and rung up my stuff. I said, don't I know you? And she said, yeah, I thought I knew you too. Your voice sounds familiar. Hey, I'm me. So we reintroduced ourselves. She's off for the summer because she's a IA in one of our schools. I think it was Brookview. And that was really kind of cool talking with her. And she's going to school to get her education degree. She wants to go, she wants to teach. And she wants to come back here. So that was, that was really cool. That was really cool. Liaisons and their effort with you, Dr. Hanson, here recently, I think that's really cool. I like, I like listening, hearing about what they're doing because they're doing great stuff. And I'm looking forward to the MCRC community. What are we calling it? Festival or back to school? It's an event. And if you can be there, be there because it's really kind of nice. And these kids are just going to be feeling pretty good once we get them. Hey, you know, they're giving free haircuts. Give them free haircuts. I like that. I like that. They got to get one. Anyway, that's all I got. I normally don't try and talk too long, but I try to keep it down. But there was a lot of stuff going on this summer and you're up, Julie.
All right. I too went to the thing at the high school. It was a great tour. Very nice. I want to tell you a little bit, I'm going to throw in a legislative report here. We don't normally do them right now, but I just think this is important to know. July 1st, there's a lot going on federally. We, our season is normally the state in January through April, March or April, depending on which season it is. And but now there's a lot going on federally. So I don't know how many of you guys know that we are missing funding that was supposed to come to us on July 1st. It was supposed to be distributed by July 1st, and now the administration has decided not to send that out. So school districts around the nation are scrambling, trying to figure out what to do. It, the money goes towards after-school and summer programs. And they provide academic enrichment and other opportunities for students. They support student learning English. So our English language learners are missing out. Teacher support, funding for hiring, retention, professional development of teachers, service for migrant students, supporting educational needs for migratory children, that sort of thing. So from what Dr. Hanson has sent us and what I understand, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, is we're pretty good for this year, but we're not quite sure what's going to be happening next year. So just remember that as we're checking up all the extra items that we need to think financially about. It's not going to be easy and we've got to, we're going to be making tough decisions. So just keep that in mind. Remember, we want to do everything we can to keep the money in our classrooms as much as possible. And then in that respect, when I was in Washington DC for the NSBA advocacy program, I met some people from Lawrence Township. They'd never been there. And then I also met a new school board member who is from Washington Township. And we made a friendship. And we actually have gotten together and are working on pulling together some of the Marion County school districts to the school board members to come together and talk about this. And we need to educate our community, let them know what's going on, and tell them the good things and share with them our concerns and where we're at financially, what kind of money we have and what we're getting it for and just where we're at. And then also, we need to think about next year as we hit into the legislative season, because it runs so fast. So we want to tell our community, get people together so that they know and they will know where to look for this information as it's occurring and so that we can keep our district and our community informed. It's just very, very important that we tell everybody and let them know what's going on because it's a time. But we can weather it. We're good. That's what we've always, to coin a phrase from a long time ago, we make lemonade out of lemons. And we've always been that way and we will continue to be that way. But we also need to be on top of it and thinking about it and just doing it. So and that, one more thing, Kim, when Dr. Hanson mentioned about the safety fair we're going to have, it's going to be October 25th. Mark your calendars. And it's going to be at the high school competition gym in that little commons area around that area. And we are very excited about it. And I've already got stuff that's going to be coming in. I just got an email that you're going to be getting a few boxes of pamphlets and activity booklets around gun safety. So when you see something from the NRA, yeah. Okay, and I'm done, I think. Welcome back, everybody. We're ready to start this next year.
Go ahead and go. Welcome, everyone. I know summer seems like it has come and gone. And I know a lot of our teachers, our custodians, transportation, everyone's been working hard to get ready for the year. MCRC, their back-to-school bash is amazing. I've been able to attend that the last couple of years. And this year I'll miss it due to a last-minute vacation before my school starts. But it's always amazing. There's tons of people. The community really comes out to support our kids and our families. And it's amazing. Seems like everything's running together. I did not mention last year, week, our last meeting about the adult graduation program, which was absolutely fabulous. Seeing our adults go of a variety of ages, go back and get their equivalency degree is amazing. I also know that that funding is also affected by these federal cuts. So that's another area of concern that we want to keep going for our community. And with that, I'll just pass it on to LaShawna.
I need help with this chair. I'm already short, so it
I need help with this chair. I'm already short, so it has me like down too, too low. Yes, Marcus. I feel like I can barely function. Thank you. And I don't have my heels on, so I'm at a deficit. So, welcome back, everyone. I have enjoyed being in the community and working with our summer camp at MCRC. The youth actually got to come over to the ranch, so they got to groom the horses, all the things. Do a STEM project, really, really inspirational to see, inspiring to see them interact with nature and not on their phones and, you know, gaming. So that was really wonderful to see. Back to school, I think the only thing that has not been mentioned, please for our families to come out and if you have families, we will have food. I think we have about 250 dozen of eggs, so that's first come, first served. So make sure that everyone gets out and get the school supplies. Really proud of the district. Our supplies have like almost tripled. And yeah, just about tripled, but we were still able to provide the same quantity that we typically do in the years past. So shout out to MCRC team for working hard on that. And I think that's about all my report. Oh, we did mental health, adult mental health first aid today with our counselors and some of our social workers and some staff from the YMCA. So that was very great. It was held right here in this room. Oh, it's about 20? 20 of us who received our certification in that. We will be opening that up to more staff in the district so we can just have more tools in our tool belts to be able to work with the adults. And then the youth mental health CP, first aid classes will be coming out soon and we will be working with some of our teachers to get certified in that. So with, oh, we had some SSOs and SROs there as well today. So very diverse, great group. I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Well, I guess the first question is, shall I repeat everything starting with Gloria on up? Yes, I participated in the tours and the mental health and all the things they spoke of. So I won't repeat everything they said, but we are excited for a new year, a new opportunity. And with the, the way things are developing now, there is more than enough bad news for everyone and gloom outlooks. So we might need to take an extra role on shining us positive to our students, reassuring them that their future is still bright and is still in their hands. And they, they can be the world changers. They can, they are the light that can make this thing, this whole thing a better place. So we need to stay on the positive for them and just reassure them that, you know, tough times come, but not even the bad lasts forever. And we're going to make it through this stretch. We've had financial crisis before and this is just one more. We'll pass through this one. We've been through tough times as a nation before. Our economy has been down before, but we always rise up. So their future is bright and all they need to do is to continue to learn, to grow and develop and chart their own path. So we can be that positive motivation for them and shine that light for them because they are the reason we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I think I, for once in my life, don't have anything else to add. Incredibly true and incredibly powerful. I, I don't have ditto to what everyone else said, particularly Kevin. With that, Kevin, do we have any board correspondence?
No matter president, we do not.
What about blue cards for items on the agenda?
No, we do not.
Okay, then we will move on to the consent agenda this much month. Sorry, our consent agenda consists of approval of minutes, financial reports, HR reports, supplemental personnel reports, HR work agreements, change orders, and the use of school property. Do I have a motion to accept the content? Oh my goodness, consent agenda.
So moved. I will second.
Thank you, Julie. Do I have a second? Thank you. Was that Terry? Thank you. And with that, we are going to have to go to a voice vote this evening because I am virtual. So Mr. Humphrey, if you could call the vote.
Yes, we will start you, Ms. Gloria.
Yay.
Mr. Howard. Ms. Julie.
Yes.
Terry. Mr. Shawna. And myself will be a yes. So Rachel?
Yes.
So.
I was going to say, I don't get to vote? No, it's you.
That will be unanimous. The ayes have it.
Excellent. And with that, we are going to move on to the construction up with Mr. Clayton.
Turn this on. All right. President Burke from Iceland. Dr. Hanson, members of the board and to our Warren community, like to present to you a combination of June and July's construction update.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board and to our entire Warren family on the far east side of Indianapolis. Welcome to the June graduation edition of Inside Warren. Our goal continues to be to invest in safety and operational excellence. If you look over my shoulder, you will see over 800 graduates preparing to walk across that stage for the final time. Though their journey of a graduate is coming to an end, their journey for the rest of their life is just beginning. And a big congratulations to our preschool, our elementary, our middle school and high school teachers who all had a significant role in preparing our scholars for this day, but again, for the rest of their lives. In today's episode, you'll get a chance to relive this proud day here in Warren Township of graduation. And also we're going to peek in on a couple of those projects, but hey, let's not waste any time out here. I'm going to see some graduates walk across that stage. President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board and to our entire Warren family on the far east side of Indianapolis. Welcome to the June graduation edition of Inside Warren. Our goal continues to be to invest. So we're going to peek in on a couple of those.
Matt, this is the song you have to dance to, by the way.
Well, I hope you enjoyed that graduation day experience. It's always one of my favorite days of the years. It's a far east side celebration and that's the Warren Central graduation. So once again, congratulations to the class of 2025. We wish you the best of luck and understand that the journey might be over here in Warren, but the journey continues with life. So again, we wish you the best of luck. As a follow-up to our previous month's construction update, we are back at Warren Central High School and we're going to give you a quick teaser of the new locker room, which is set to open officially and allow for our football team to move in and our baseball team here in about one month, about the second week of August or so. So we're going to take a, a look at that. But before we go in, I just want to give you a little surprise that you'll be able to see after this tour. We have our new series starting this year, this school year called Beyond the Journey. And we're going to take a look at Warren Central graduates that have recently left us that are doing great things, whether in college or professionally. So be ready for that teaser. But for now, let's head into the locker room. Okay, so we're inside the Larry Woolen locker room. And compared to the last time we were here, I don't even recognize this place anymore just because of the progress that has taken place. But we are in the main, we're located in the main entrance right now. And if you come in off of Lot 8, which is on the, the east end of the locker room, you will enter this hallway and this hallway will pretty much paint the history of Warren football. All right, welcome to the brand-new Warren Central High School Athletic Training Room. And the reason that we wanted to show you this room is because this is, I don't think it's a debate. This is the best athletic training facility that you'll see in the state of Indiana. And the reason why it's important for us, when you're servicing over 800-plus student athletes, particularly in the fall and the spring season when we're in our outdoor sports, this room will service all Warren Central student athletes. It doesn't matter what sport you play in the fall and the spring, this will be the location of our athletic trainers. So just starting off with the flooring, I think the flooring is really cool. You see the, the black with the sprinkle of gold there. That's a nice little customized feature that we wanted to do because we also understand the importance of branding and we want our kids to take pride in the black and gold. This is what we call the wet area. Here's the hydrotherapy tubs. So if our kids need some sort of rehab or they need some type of assistance as relates to injuries or working with our athletic trainers, this will be accessible. In our old facility, we only had one. Now we can service and provide this opportunity for multiple kids. We are now inside the coach's office. And what I would say is probably the, the best feature of the coach's office outside of the space and understand here at Warren Central High School, between our paid coaches and our volunteers, on a given day, you're going to have up to 30 adults that will be right here in this office and then going out to work with our, our student athletes. So the best thing about this, the way this office is set up is just the, the ability to supervise and provide supervision to our, our student athletes. As you can see, you have here on the, my left side, you have the varsity locker room. On my right side, you have our freshman and baseball locker rooms. And with these windows here, our coaches will be able to supervise our kids throughout the entire time they're inside the locker room. So as we get ready to enter the equipment room, it's important to see this feature when you have hundreds of thousands of dollars of product and equipment and cameras and all types of electronical equipment that teams need to provide the necessary assistance for their programs. It's important that we're able to lock it up. So we have a keyless entry here where you'll have to use a swipe card to get in. Something new for our locker room is this cage. This cage is going to provide an extra layer of security because again, we have thousands and thousands of dollars of electronic equipment. As we continue to move on, probably the, the most noticeable thing that you'll see is what we call gearboxes. And they're branded with the Warren W. The significance of these gearboxes is you got to think about here at Warren, Warren Township, football's a big deal. And when you have just at the high school, over 200 kids in the program, being able to store that many shoulder pads, that many helmets, game uniforms, pads and other types of equipment is, is very important. In our other locker room, we didn't have enough space. We had to store things in the shower area, believe it or not, shoulder pads, because we just didn't have enough space. These gearboxes, which open up and we have several of them, we will be able to store all of our equipment, our footwear, our helmets, everything will be in one place. As we close out another school year and we transition to the 25, 26 school year, we just want to tell all of you thank you, especially our building principals that have taken valuable time out of their days to take you on some of these tours, to bring you Inside Warren, as well as our design team from CSO, our construction teams from Skilman, Powers &amp; Sons. But their cooperation, their teamwork has really made this a special year. Most importantly, we want to thank our, our school board and our leadership, Dr. Hanson, because these projects are truly transforming our educational space here in Warren Township and our community. And I want to thank my cameraman and loyal partner, Logan Hunt, for all of his great work every week. And we can't wait to see you next year on another edition of Inside Warren.
What's up, guys? It's Cam Herron, positive 2025 graduate and welcome to Notre Dame.
This fall, explore the inspiring stories of Warren Township's graduates with Beyond the Journey. Discover how their Warren experience prepared them for new opportunities as they transition into the next chapter of their lives. Kicking off the series is 2025 Warren Central graduate and University of Notre Dame freshman football player, Cam Herron. Don't miss the debut of Beyond the Journey coming this fall.
That was good.
I got, I got a question. I got a question. I know Skilman, I know CSO. Who are Power and Sons? What do they do?
So Power and Sons, they are the construction company that we partner with for, specifically with the locker room. They've also were part of the renovation at the Performing Arts Center. If you recall, they were a minority-owned company that we went through the process, interviewed. And as you know, we have one of the most inclusive processes that you'll find around the state of Indiana, thanks to your leadership. And, you know, as we prepare for hopefully another round starting in 2026, Power, Skilman and some of the other construction companies that were in the process of interviewing, we'll have, we'll have opportunities down the road based on the good work they've done with us.
Thanks.
Marcus, that was a great presentation. I want to thank you so very much for having internet trouble. It made me feel like you're truly including me with all of the internet troubles I've had since I've been on vacation. So thank you. There's nothing like trying to communicate from halfway across the world. And then add to that, that Cam Harris used to be one of my kiddos. So I'm really, really excited to see his presentation. And with that, we are up with the referendum update with Matt Parkinson.
Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I'm excited. I'm going to have two back-to-back topics to talk about with the board this evening. We're going to talk about the referendum and then separately, we're going to talk about the next round of construction to build on what, what Marcus just presented. You know, what's great about both the referendum topic and the construction topic is these are two of the most student-forward things that we do as a school district. I'm going to talk about our five referendum themes, all of them directly impact student learning. Same is going to be true when we get to the, the construction piece. So board, the referendum fits in with every part of the strategic plan, all five of the focus areas. It's critical to what we do and the way we're able to fund the education. It's critical to what we do and the way we're able to fund the education for our students. So just background for, for the board, for the community on our school district's referendum timeline. We first passed a referendum in May 2018. That operating referendum was in place for four school years, 2019 through 2023. We then went back to the community in 2023 to ask for approval for what we call the repeal and replace operating referendum. Through that process, we eliminated former referendum, reset the clock for a new eight year cycle. And we're in that cycle now, 2024 and forward. You know, we've used this slide almost every time I've presented on, on a referendum. In Indiana, school districts are allowed to run three types of referenda. Here in our school district, we've only ever run one, an operating referendum. Separate types are capital referenda, used for construction. We've not used that one before. And then school safety referendum, we happen not to have run that one, although we do have safety as a critical component of our operating referendum. So board, community, our referendum budget for the fiscal year that just ended on June 30th was $13 million, broken into the five categories that we ran the referendum on. When we adopt the budget each March, this is something that, that we display and walk through. We, we did it in March of 2025 as we get ready for fiscal year 2026. And we're going to talk through each of the individual categories. We finished the year at about 12.4 million dollars in expenditures in the operating referendum fund. So again, our fiscal year as a school district aligns closely with the school calendar, July 1st to June 30th. Our adopted and certified budget by DLGF is $13 million, final expenditure is 12.4. Our certified budget for fiscal year 2026 or calendar year 2026, we anticipate being $14 million. Realistically, we expect our expenditures to be pretty in line with what our expenditures were for the fiscal year that we just finished. So I'm going to get into each of the five categories. Again, when we ran the referendum, there were five items that were listed on the ballot question, five items we included in our materials. And those are the same five items that we, we carry out in our referendum today. First one is safety and security, critically for the way that we run our schools. For the last fiscal year, we spent about 1.66 million in the safety and security bucket within the operating referendum fund. By and large, it funds SROs and SSOs. More than 95% of that 1.66 million dollars is the wages and benefits for those key personnel in our buildings. The remaining piece is supplies, professional development, small components like that. Board, the second category and the largest category is retention and recruitment, professional development and family engagement. For fiscal year 2025, we spent 4.18 million dollars in this category. The biggest piece of it, and the biggest piece of it by a lot, is the portion of our support staff pay that we're able to sustain through the operating referendum. So by way of background for the community, just reminded for the school board, as part of our SOR funding, we identified a critical need to get all of our support staff pay up to a minimum of $15 per hour. When we ran the referendum and generated additional revenue, the primary thing that we were going to do with those funds was to sustain that revenue or sustain those wages that we put in place for our support staff. So the board meeting immediately after the referendum passed, we came to the board and the board graciously approved the ongoing pay for our support staff. And that represented a major change in, in wages for our support staff. For a typical district hourly employee whose school, whose calendar lines up with the school year, that raise was over $2,600 per year. For some support staff members that work year round, it's up to $5,000. So this was a major investment by the community and by our school board and school districts in sustaining competitive pay for our support staff members. The other key bucket within the, within this category is our family engagement liaisons, previously paid using SOR money. Beginning in October, they rolled into the operating referendum fund. Last year, we spent about 0.8 million dollars. For the upcoming year, we anticipate about 1.1 million dollars. The third category within the operating referendum is transportation. So last year out of the referendum fund, we spent about 3.05 million dollars. Transportation is the biggest single thing that we do as a school district outside of running our classrooms. If you consider the number of school buses that we have on the road every day, over 100, nearly 10,000 kids who ride the bus. And it's not just our regular routes getting to and from school, but it's field trips, it's extracurricular activities, it's summer school. It's a major, major part of our operation. Between the operations fund and the operating referendum fund, last year we spent nearly $9 million on transportation as a school district, 34% of that, excuse me, the referendum fund paid for 34.4%. So more than one in every three dollars in wages and benefits for our bus drivers and bus monitors. And finally, board and community, fiscal year 25 expenditures on student staff technology is 1.3 million dollars. You'll recall that we had to move, when SOR expired, our device purchase cycle back into the operating referendum fund. We're going to talk in just a minute about some of the outlook for the future of the referendum fund. It's going to have challenges. We're also going to get through them and get to the point Kevin was making earlier. One of the ones that we talked about earlier this spring is our device purchase cycle is going to change, not for the school year that we're going into, but for the upcoming school year. So for this school year, for the last few school years, we've been using iPads for kindergarten through fifth grade, or buying them when students are in kindergarten and fifth grade, Chromebooks when students are in ninth grade. In the future cycle, we're going to be purchasing iPads when students are in first grade, Chromebooks when students are in sixth grade. So if you consider it, we're doing two purchases instead of three purchases every year. And that's going to save us about three quarters of a million dollars. And so we're going to talk, after we get through this slide, about what the future of that, that fund looks like. So the last key piece is student learning, college and career readiness and K-12 enrichment. And by and large, this pays for our middle school and high school counseling positions to the tune of 2.2 million dollars in the school year that we just finished. You know, counselors play such a critical role in the way that we educate our students. They play a critical role in academic achievement, social, emotional wellbeing, college and career exploration. Our young people are going through a lot. It's not easy to be a young person in 2025. The counselors at the middle school and the high school level that are sustained through the community's investment in the referendum fund are absolutely vital to the way that we run our schools. So board, I do think it's important in this forum to talk about the impact of Senate Enrolled Act I and what it's going to mean for operating referendum for us and for every school district in the state that has an operating referendum. So I, I put in here just kind of for an awareness piece for the community, the, the formula that, that indicates how much property tax revenue we collect in the fund. As a school district, we have what's called certified net assessed value. And so what that is, is that's the cumulative assessed value for every taxable property in the school district, homeowners, apartments, rental homes, business properties, farmland. Cumulatively, the taxable value of that totals just under $4 billion. Our operating referendum tax rate is 30 cents, that's a maximum rate. And so for this year, for the calendar year we're in, that generated an operating referendum levy of just under $12 million. Senate Enrolled Act I was designed to deliver property tax relief to taxpayers. Largely it did. I think it's going to have some, some, we're all kind of unpacking. It's going to be probably some unintended consequences of the way it's going to be rolled out, but it, it was delivered for operating referendum funds. Taxpayers are going to see relief anywhere that they live, if they're within a school district that has an operating referendum. That relief is going to come due to increases and deductions for 1% and 2% taxpayers. So 1% taxpayers are homeowners, 2% taxpayers are, referring to farmland, rental properties, apartment complexes. As those deductions phase in over the next six years, that's going to push down operating referendum revenue because net assessed values are going to go down. So board and community, we work with a group called Policy Analytics. It does just fantastic work in terms of projecting the impact of, of property tax reform. This is what the picture looks like for MSD Warren over the remaining life of our operating referendum or through 2030. This year, for the calendar year that we're in, through property taxes, we anticipate generating $12 million. If we look across that top line, had property tax reform through Senate Enrolled Act I not passed, this is what we would have anticipated in increases in funding through property tax revenue. So these are largely at this point inflationary increases. As property values rise against that flat property tax rate, our revenue would increase and we would use that to sustain all of the priorities within our referendum fund. The second line is the projection for what our operating referendum revenue is going to be. And you'll notice that it declines. And the reason again, it's declining is the level of deductions that roll in on the 1% and 2% properties are almost certain to drive down our net assessed value. And that's going to be the case for 95% of school districts around Indiana, we think, based upon property tax reform. So we look out into 2026, pretty modest decline, 2027 it picks up. When we get all the way out to 2030, as we sit here today, our projection is that we're going to collect 10.7 million dollars in property taxes for the operating referendum fund. Had Senate Enrolled Act I not passed, we would have anticipated $14 million in that fund. That's 3.3 million dollars that we would have anticipated being able to invest into programs and positions and services for our students. And we're going to be forced to make difficult decisions. Again, every school district with an operating referendum is going to be forced to make difficult decisions. Even if we don't factor in those inflationary increases, that 10.7 million dollars is 1.3 million dollars less than we're collecting even this year. Certainly between 2025 and 2030, wages will go up, insurance costs will go up. So this is going to be a challenge. We're resilient, we're going to navigate it. We got a little bit of runway, but we're going to have, we're going to have difficult conversations ahead. So next steps, you know, our current referendum runs through 2031. Keep in mind, we last ran a referendum in 2023. We would have been due to run one in 2031. One of the other reforms in Senate Enrolled Act I moved the dates on which school districts can run a referendum. So the last year that we're going to be able to run a renewal operating referendum at this point is 2030. So we still have years to go, but, but that's going to get here before we know it. Again, our, our highest revenue year is likely to be 2025, possibly 2026. I should say to balance out what I just showed on the slides, we're, we're hearing some early reports that assessed value is going to be higher for 2026 on commercial properties in particular. Those are business properties than, than what went into those estimates. So, so we may have one more year where, where things are fairly stable before the decline begins. You know, modifying our device purchase cycle, like we mentioned, is going to save about three quarters of a million dollars annually. That's a big piece of what we need to do, just dollar wise to get there. But again, relative to what would have happened under, under tax reform, our expenditures are going to have to be about 3.3 million dollars lower at the end of this decade. Bottom line, we're going to continue investing in outstanding educational experience for all MSD Warren students. We're going to continue to, to invest within those five buckets that we took to the community. We're resilient, we find ways, and I'm confident that we'll do so moving forward. So again, just in summary, the community's investment is just absolutely vital. It's hard to say thank you enough for everything the community enables us to do through the operating referendum fund. Through the referendum fund, we've got a secure learning environment through funding our MSD Warren Township SROs and SSOs. Safe transportation for nearly 10,000 students, competitive wages for all of our hourly support staff, directly funded through the operating referendum. iPad and Chromebook devices for all of our Warren students, robust counseling services at the middle school and high school level to support our kids. We have additional information on the referendum up on our webpage. And just community awareness, board awareness, we catalog that. So every six months, when we get through a half year cycle of expenditures, we updated on, on what's happened over the past year. We've already updated it, appreciate the support from Logan, Lamar. We've already updated it for the six months that ended on June 30th. We're going to continue doing that moving forward. Board, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Matt, I had, I had one. I, I need you to go back a few, few slides. Yeah, thank you. In reference to those Chromebooks and the iPads, kindergarten and fifth grade, then you got first grade going, getting, getting them in the second year or in the future. Why is that broken up like that? I thought all of those kids, all those grades had those iPads and Chromebooks.
Yeah, so, so today we've got one to one devices, K through 12, and we do have devices for every kid. That will still be the case in the future, not the one to one piece necessarily. Every kid is going to have access to devices. The cycle is going to switch to where we're purchasing the iPads in first grade and kids will hold on to them to fifth grade. And then we'll have sort of modified classroom sets to go back at the kindergarten level. And then the Chromebook cycle, instead of beginning at ninth grade, is going to begin in the sixth grade. It'll be one to one from that point forward, using Chromebook devices.
I'm, 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 and you don't have to answer this, I'm just, I'm, I got confidence that this is happening because we got, you know, our tech guys are keeping track of these kinds of things. But the inventory is what I'm concerned about. You got iPads with kids, Chromebooks with kids, maintenance, fair wear and tear, that sort of thing. How do you re, how, how are we re, how do you say, refreshing our numbers so that our inventory is, is, is settled for the incoming other students that were going to be coming?
Yeah, it's, it's a massive part of Kent's team's summer and so I'll invite him up to speak about it.
So as Matt was saying, currently we purchase devices for kindergartners each year. We have been, new devices for fifth graders and then new devices for freshmen. So they use those for the cycle, K4, 58, and then 912. So what, and that's one to one. So each student has one, it's assigned to them in our inventory system. Currently, K8, don't take them home. So the wear and tear isn't as much as it used to be when they were taking them home. This year, our damage rate was, what, Justin, 3% or something roughly?
Bad.
So.
That's not bad.
Yeah, when they were going home, it was in the twenties.
Yeah.
So much, much better when it's under adult supervision and they're charged. So going forward, this, it would be the same way, but rather than purchasing new devices for kindergarten classes, each year we'd be purchasing new devices for first grade classes. And there'll be classroom sets, so not dissimilar to what they have now. It just won't be one to one. So each iPad will be assigned to a classroom rather than a student. So then we ask teachers, this is what we did when we used to have classroom sets, we asked teachers to check them each week. So we have a program where they go in and check the cart, look for damage. If they find one, they noted, and then that application automatically opens a ticket for the tech for that building to come and check the device. And if it's damaged, we can send it back to Apple to, if it's an iPad, to be repaired and we replace it. If it's a Chromebook, we repair it ourselves. But, so it'll be the same. Chromebooks now are supported by Google for 10 years. That's new. So previously, the operating systems only got updates for four or five years, which really limited how long we could use them. So this makes us able to issue them in sixth grade, ensuring that they'll still be supported for testing and other applications by the time they're seniors.
That's all good. Hey, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, that 10 years is good. I, I was thinking that, that it was not that, you know, getting them upgraded and getting them repaired and all that kind of stuff to keep them up with the trends as well is a, you know, is, 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 is an effort.
Yeah.
But 10 year, that's, that's not bad.
Yeah, and the damage is pretty intuitive. The older the students get, the less damage we see.
Yeah.
Right, so we've, we've always seen when they were going home, it was always those middle school grades where we saw the most damage. But since we don't send those home anymore, that has really dropped off. And, and those students currently, they pick them up in their first period, carry them all day long and put them back in the carts in the same classroom at the end of the day. So they're still handling them all day long. We're just not seeing the damage because they're not on the bus, they're not going home, they're not being lost, they're charged better because they can put them in the carts in the classroom.
Are you able to control where they can go as it relates to accessing the internet and these other social media?
Absolutely. So we're required by law because we get federal funds for our internet through E-rate. We're required to filter students. So we do have that in place and whether they, no matter where they take the device, they're still filtered, whether it's here or at home.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Yep.
Asked about the construction money. Is he going to talk about it now or later?
I just wanted to ask you, Matt, you know, we're doing a lot of constructions within the school system, you know, in the district. How is that going to affect us and how are we going to continue funding it?
Sure, so, so the question was, we're doing a lot of construction. How, how is property tax reform going to impact us and how are we going to continue funding it? So it's going to affect us quite a bit. And we'll talk about that during the next portion. I've got some slides from, from Baker Tilly that we present as part of the, the preliminary determination hearing. To, the, the bottom line for us when it comes to the operating referendum is separate from construction, so I just want to make sure that's out there. We've historically managed to a flat debt service tax rate for the last at least four years, 52 cent tax rate. And essentially what happens is our net assessed value multiplied by that 52%, 52 cents is the amount that we can generate to repay our, our bonds. And then through those bonds, we fund all the investments we make around the school district. So the five elementary schools that we've majorly renovated, all the work we've done at Warren Central High School at Creston, Sunny Heights, all funded through our bond projects. As net assessed values decrease, the impact that's going to have for us and for everybody is it's going to potentially limit the amount of projects we can take on or the dollar amount of projects that we can take on. We and everybody else is also going to have to have a conversation about what that means for property tax rates. One of the, the ironies of property tax reform is it's almost certainly going to lead to property tax rate increases, not specific to MSD Warren, every local government in the state. I, I think even the bill's author would most likely acknowledge that. So, you know, our 1% taxpayers are already at their property tax caps. A rate increase for them doesn't necessarily impact their tax bills, but that's likely to be a function of what happens just because of assessed values come down. We're still going to be able to invest in our buildings. We're still going to be able to do great things for our students. We're going to talk about some of those things here in just a few minutes. We'll adapt, but, but it could curtail what we can get done.
I just wanted to say, are we conveying this information also to the public? And then, and what avenues are we ensuring that? this transparency is not just getting to us as the board and just being stated in this meeting, but we have to depend on our community in order to pass this referendum? So, I think it's important that we make sure this information gets back out into the community, that we are being good stewards over the referendum that was passed and utilizing the funds in the manner that we had proposed that we were gonna do.
Yeah, wholeheartedly agree, absolutely agree. And really, the connection between the referendum fund and the taxpayer is probably more direct than any other fund that we have, just the nature of a referendum fund. So, you're right, we speak about it at school board meetings twice a year. We do update our website, we're beginning the podcast to try to get content out through that means. You know, it can be hard to reach people, I think, sometimes when it comes to tax information especially. I wholeheartedly agree that we've got to continue to make sure that's sort of front and center, that people understand the impact. You know, one of the things that I've become more convinced on is I've sort of reflected on the impact of property tax reform is, you know, we talk about numbers frequently, that's kind of the, what we have to do from an administration level and a school board level. The real impact of property tax reform when it comes to school districts is the types of services that we're able to put in front of our kids. And I think that's where we're gonna connect most directly with our families, with our parents, with those that live in the community, is we have to make sure that we're ready to convey the direct impact that property tax reform has. And again, our revenue is gonna drop, and that's gonna present challenges for us. It's gonna present challenges for every school district with a referendum. That's where I think probably our focus has to be, is making sure that we're really clear on what that specific impact is.
I guess, how are we conveying that? I know, I think we all agree that it has to be conveyed, but how is it being conveyed?
Yeah, so, I mean, three avenues that come to my mind right now are through the board meetings, through the website updates, and we're starting this outreach process through the podcast. I'd love to discuss more ways that we can get out into the community and talk about them. I'd welcome any ideas or feedback that we've got.
Okay, that's good, because we have caretakers that are seniors and they may not listening to the podcast or tapping into our technology, and they are the core of our community. So, we need to ensure that we are reaching out and updating them, and not only when it comes close to referendum, but building that trust now, showing them that we have been good stewards. Because not if we have to do another referendum, but when we have to do another referendum, we are already there, and we, our community knows that we're gonna do what we've stated we're gonna do. But thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
I just wanna take back on what you just said. We keep, we're not using the M-word. We need to market all the stuff that we do, and that's what you're talking about. We need to be telling them what's going on and keep them fed with information so that they're on board. And this isn't a surprise when we do have to announce it. So, you wanna hear the M-word a lot?
I hear it.
You know, I was just thinking, Morehead, you know, we have a lot of families that go through Morehead. That can be an avenue, you know, of communicating with parents. We can also give information to the counselors, the family liaisons. I mean, all of these different avenues, we can give information to them to pass out to the families and things that they meet. And I think that that would give us a broader range of communicating, you know, with those families that may not get it otherwise.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, Matt, for your time. And with that, we're going to go on to our next agenda item, which is our yellow cards, which is the business of citizens' presence for items not on the agenda. Kevin, do we have any yellow cards?
Yes, Madam President, we do. We have...
Okay, could you please call up the speaker?
We have Ms. Elizabeth Banks.
Pass of 81.
Can you turn on your button?
Did we tell her about the time?
I'm technologically challenged, my son's not here to help me.
We're right there with you.
Yeah, I got three minutes. First of all, I'm very disappointed. Last year was Warren's 100th birthday. I saw nothing on the news, nothing on Facebook, there was no, nothing. If y'all had celebrated it, it wasn't out there. And I thought that would be a great boost, Warren pride. I'm always proud to say I'm from Warren, like there's another school, it's Warren. And then, the plaque for Joseph Warren that y'all took down when you started messing with the front and the back door at Warren is leaning against the wall over in this other room, and it needs to be put up. And I figured you would do that last year for your 100th, our 100th birthday, put it out there. We have Warren people, we have Jeff George, we have Jane Pauli. They could have come, made a big deal out of it. We're proud to be from Warren Township. I'm hoping that gets out there soon, either here or what you are now calling the back of Warren, which is 16th Street. And then, he was showing the construction. I took pictures when you were putting the Bus Depot in the back of Warren, or the front, my front, your back, 16th Street. And I had a lot of comments, and people were like, what's going on? This is all new, because not everybody lives in Warren Township. And I even live across the street from Warren. And you don't hear anything about all this, here we grow again, needs to be out on Facebook so people can see on the alumni page, because all you get on the alumni pages are people that have passed. You need to say, this is what we're doing, this is where your money's going. People would be proud to say they're from Warren, and look, here, this is going on. We're getting all these new buildings and all this new area. You named the Prince Center after my brother, that should have been up there. Yeah, I'm a pre-vost. Two generations of graduates from Warren. Five of us, four of us worked, not me, four of us actually work for Warren. But all that should have been up there to be proud of what we're doing. I know the budgets are tight, you know, what's going on, but, you know, take a couple pictures, five minutes to somehow put it down, I don't do all that stuff, that's what my son's for. Put it all in there and post it on Facebook. I wouldn't even know how to turn on a podcast or where to go to get a podcast. The magazines, have them out at Kroger's so more people can have access to them. I didn't even know where you could get them besides coming here. And you can have some of this stuff in your magazine, in your weekly magazines. Does that mean my three minutes are up? I tried to talk fast and be, but, you know, I'm proud to be from Warren. I say it like there's no other school, and we need to just get out there and show people.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms., thanks for the comments, we always appreciate them.
You want a coaching job? Said you want a coaching job, sound like a coach.
I'm too old school.
There's room for you.
They'd have to fill the line, they'd get mad at me.
Okay, we are going to go back to Matt Parkinson and discuss the secondary schools project and a preliminary determination hearing.
Good evening again, Dr. Hanson, President Burke, members of the board. I'm excited to talk about our next phase of construction this evening. We've got some really exciting things on tap that are gonna make a big difference in the educational experience for our students. Board, community, this is our second preliminary determination hearing. We have to do this two times before taking on construction projects of this type. I'm gonna invite up our colleague Hannah Clendenning this evening. Hannah works at Barnes and Thornburg alongside Jeff Quackenbush. Jeff was with us last month when we did our first preliminary determination hearing. I'm gonna invite Hannah just sort of walk through the process of what we have to do during this hearing this evening, and then the resolution we're going to ask the board to adopt. And then, I'm gonna present on the nature of the projects and the financial impact. So, Hannah, would you mind providing us an overview?
Good evening, Hannah Clendenning, Barnes and Thornburg. As Matt said, this is the second of two required public hearings that kick off the process for a bond issue like this. After the, after we each give our presentations, we would ask the board to then invite the public up for comment or questions that they may have about the project. After that, close the public hearing, and then we would ask the board to consider the resolution. Keep in mind that that resolution is just setting a bunch of maximum financial parameters, and everything at this point is still preliminary. If the board approves the resolution, there would be a notice published in the paper detailing pretty much all of the key points and financial parameters contained in the resolution. And then, there would also be two more meetings that the school board would have to hold prior to any issuance of the bonds, and one of those would be another public hearing for the public to give comment or ask questions about the lease that may happen or additional appropriation, depending on what type of bonds are issued and at what point in time. So, after this, I'm gonna turn it back over to Matt. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have now at the outset, but otherwise, I'll be available as needed, so, thanks.
Okay, so, board, community, we're gonna speak through our 2026 through 2028 construction projects in the lead up to asking the board to adopt a resolution declaring, or issuing a preliminary determination for the need for the projects. The board goals a strategic plan, investing in academic excellence and student achievement, Warren student journey, meeting the needs of the whole child, safety and operational excellence. We're gonna discuss projects that are in the planning phase, like Hannah mentioned, just like we talked about with the referendum fund, Senate enrolled Act One. It did make substantial changes to the property tax environment. We anticipate selling these bonds in 2026, in fall of 2026, most specifically, most likely October or November of 2026. We're asking the board to approve up to $75 million in principal. We may sell the bonds for less than that, or we may sell it in phases, not all upfront, but the maximum parameters that Hannah mentioned are for that $75 million cap. There's two focus areas for our 2026 through 2028 construction. It's the intermediate middle schools and Warren Central High School. You know, our aim with this round of construction updates is to positively and directly impact student experience. We're gonna talk about classrooms, CTE, athletics, performance. Like I mentioned when I first stood up here, this, to me, and I think Mr. Clayton would say the same, this is one of the most exciting things we do that directly impact MSD Warren students, and it doesn't just impact them today, but for years and generations to come. The investments that we've made in Warren Central and in the five elementary schools we've renovated in the last few years set up those schools for the 2030s and for the 2040s. They're vital investments in the longevity of our school environment. Focus area one, we're gonna talk about the intermediate middle schools. So, and, boy, if this is familiar, it's the same slide deck as last month, that's by design. Same will be true of the financing information that I show. Working with Schmidt, it's the design professionals on this, working through the process to identify the construction manager, as Mr. Clayton mentioned. I'm working on a facility assessment at all three of our intermediate middle schools. There's an important tie-in to Lilly Phase Three when it comes to the middle schools through our jog centers, or through the potential jog centers. So, board, anticipated scope at the middle school level. The highest profile item is those jog centers. Again, there's a tie-in here with Lilly Phase Three, so for the community's awareness, Lilly Foundation opened up for Marion County Schools last year, three different phases of grant funding. First two phases were non-competitive, they added up to a little over $5.5 million for our school district. The third phase is competitive, we're eligible for up to $30 million in funding. So, this is generational, meaningful funding potentially available. We anticipate if we're awarded that full amount, about half of that going to construction work at our intermediate middle school levels. The biggest piece of that would be jog centers. So, these would be flexible, multipurpose spaces designed to bring down CTE education at a more advanced level into the middle school level. To me, it's really capitalizing on what I think is a core strength of our brand here in Warren Township, which is the Walker Career Center. It's infusing the strength of the Walker Career Center and the principles that we're able to introduce to our students in a more advanced way at the middle school level. The middle schools, we're gonna be talking about classroom improvements, items from floors to ceilings, and I mean that very literally, classroom floors, paint, ceiling tiles, lights, things that impact the floor or the student experience. HVAC, so heating and cooling in the buildings, roofing, investments in building longevity. Board, community, just a brief profile on our three intermediate middle schools. Creston is our oldest intermediate middle school. Last renovated a major way in 2007, although we have done quite a bit of work over the last couple of years, up doing the floor, the paint, the furniture, the window wrap that goes around the exterior. It feels like a much brighter school today than it did as recently as a couple of years ago. But it's one of our candidates for some level of work. Same with Raymond Park, the newest middle school, constructed in 1994, last renovated in 2003. It does feel like, even today, like I mentioned last month, I think even today Raymond Park feels like the newest middle school, in spite of the fact that it's incredibly 30 years old. And then finally, Stony Brook. Stony Brook was built in 1972, last renovated in 2008. Like I mentioned last month, if we have one intermediate middle school that's likely to receive the bulk of our focus, pretty confident at this point, it's gonna be Stony Brook. We still have, again, that facility assessment coming in from our partners at Schmidt, but our own eyes tell us, and the early returns from them, are that's the building that's gonna be the best candidate for the most extensive work. Focus area two, past the intermediate middle school level is our high school work. So, board, we've had three phases of renovation at Warren Central. Functionally, this would be Phase Four. We're conducting a facility assessment with our partners at CSO on that campus right now. This work's gonna follow the completion of Warren Central Phase Three. You know, I wanna mention, we appreciate the feedback, I appreciate the feedback personally on, you know, needing to get the word out about all the great work that we've done in our buildings at Warren Central. Howard, what you mentioned from the tour of the high school building, I really believe genuinely, we've transformed the learning environment at Warren Central over the last five years, and especially with the Phase Three renovations, which we'll talk about in just a minute, in the main academic corridors, absolutely key to the way that kids are gonna learn in that building for years to come. So, board, community, Phase One at Warren Central was site improvements, drainage, parking. We did a lot in the performing arts portion of the building, we built the field on 16th Street that's largely used by the band. Phase Two of Warren Central's renovations was the high school administration office, the Career Center administration office, moving the counseling office from the 16th Street side up to where the principal's office used to be. Major renovations at the Performing Arts Center. I'd encourage anybody who hasn't been in there in the last year, go take a look at the Performing Arts Center. It's such a beautiful facility today. A lot of parking in Phase Two, especially on the north side of the building. And then Phase Three, again, all of the classrooms downstairs and upstairs in the G and H hallways. Those are where our students spend the biggest parts of their day. That's the biggest stretch of academic rooms that we have in the building. They've all been touched through renovation. Same thing with all of our Walker Career Center classrooms, or virtually all the Walker Career Center classrooms have been impacted by Phase Three construction. On Industrial Drive, which is the portion on the northeast part of the building, the shop spaces, the auto body spaces have been renovated. We've expanded out the classrooms on the exterior portion of those buildings, really kind of making those class spaces appropriate for 2025 and beyond. A lot of HVAC improvements as part of Phase Three as we got to those classrooms. And board, you'll recall, we're gonna be bringing you a bid package this fall for some major roofing work. We purposely timed that for when Phase Three was largely complete, so that way we'd go in and do the work on top of it. A lot of Warren Central's roof is gonna get replaced through the end of Phase Three. So, Phase Four, again, functionally, our focus area two of our 2026 through 2028 construction projects. We're gonna have a lot of great things that happen at Warren Central, that we're studying at least at Warren Central. The fieldhouse in that building is 20 years old at this point, and it feels 20 years old. Gets used daily heavily by physical education classes and by athletics. We're taking a look at art classrooms, CTE classrooms that weren't updated through Phase Three, especially in the media space, that's kind of right there adjacent to the new counseling office. The Warrior Dome is well past its useful life. We're gonna have to take a look at a replacement for that facility. Performing arts spaces, athletics, a location for JR OTC, HVAC, investments in building longevity. We have an ambitious list here of things we're looking to get done at the high school and at the middle school levels for that level, for that matter. Probably this fall, we're gonna reach a point where we're gonna have to make decisions on, you know, what's in and what's out, but we're attacking this thing with a lot of ambition, and we're gonna try to get done everything we can for the students at Warren Central High School.
Are you providing us with a, yeah, thank you. Are you providing us with a priority list, or is that just a, you know, you threw all those up there?
Yeah, so this is not a priority list, this is a list of the things that we're studying. We have asked CSO to prioritize a handful of things. Actually, it does pretty closely track with this. So, we asked them to prioritize renovations to the fieldhouse, the art classrooms, a replacement for the Warrior Dome, and taking a look at the wrestling space. We've also looked at the science classrooms, they're candidates for renovation, although honestly, they're in... honestly, they're in pretty reasonable shape.
Okay.
So timeline, we're working on facility assessments with our design partners at Schmidt and CSO. We're going through the process to procure our construction manager. We anticipate coming back to the board at the August board meeting with an update on who we would anticipate working with from the CM process. That was the names that Marcus mentioned earlier for our current rounds of renovation and construction. Skillman has some of that work, Powers &amp; Sons has some of that work today. It's going to be a competitive process, where I'd anticipate they're going to be part of it, and probably others as well.
Is that construction manager the Power &amp; Sons?
That's one of our two current construction managers.
The other one?
Skillman.
Okay.
This summer, we're doing our preliminary determination hearings, that's what we did last month and what we're doing this evening. This fall, we'll revise the scope and get into preliminary design. One of the first things we're going to have our construction managers do when they get on board with us is, we're going to start putting cost estimates together, and that's where some of our conversations will have to come back together on. We have an ambitious list of projects, we're going to try to tackle every single one of them that we can. There's going to come a point where we decide, you know, what those projects are going to be with some dollar amounts associated. In the wintertime, we'll finalize design, develop construction documents. We anticipate in the spring going to bid, where we'd have potential trades that participate, and then, fall 2026 through 2028 is when we'd break ground with construction. Board, it's a lot of material. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the construction aspect, and then I'm going to transition after this to talk about the financial aspect of it.
Okay, I have a question. How did you determine Stony Brook needed the most attention? Because during our tour, it seems like Creston needed the most attention. When was Creston built and when was it last renovated?
Sure, so Creston was built in 1964, last renovated in a major way in 2007. We did those building walkthroughs a couple of years ago, that resulted in several million dollars in investment at Creston. So, we've replaced flooring in all of the classrooms in that building, we've painted all of the classrooms in that building, new student furniture in every classroom in that building, we've painted the door frames, we've painted the rails going up the stairs, and we put the window film around the outside. Creston's still going to need work too. I don't think we're going to be in a position where any of the middle schools get no investment at all. Creston's had more recent investment at a multimillion-dollar level than Stony Brook has. And then past that, again, we're doing the facility assessment with Schmidt, and we're looking at the aesthetic portions of the classrooms, but we're also looking at building systems. So we're talking about the boilers and the chillers, and the lighting and the electrical infrastructure, and it's got more aged equipment in many places than what Creston does. Creston, to be really clear, could still use quite a bit of investment. We're going to have limited resources, and we're going to have to make decisions, but what our eyes tell us in 2025, and again, what we're seeing from our design professionals is that the most likely candidate for that kind of deep level of renovation at this point is Stony Brook.
Okay, I want to ask another question. When you, that's the second question I was going to ask, about the air conditioning system, the heating system. I know that Creston had major problems with that. Has that been corrected?
We, so, one of the last things we did, it's our S R dollars, is we invested in a new cooling tower at Creston. So that's the biggest piece of the cooling infrastructure at our middle school and high school buildings, so we did do that. That's been part of the facility assessment that we've heard is Creston and Raymond Park, both on the heating side, are probably candidates for boiler replacements at this point, so I think there's a strong chance that that gets factored in, either through this project or through one of our annual GO bonds that we invest in.
Okay, because that's the question I was going to ask. Instead of pouring all the money into Stony Brook, hitting, prioritize and sort of hitting some of these major areas, like you said, Raymond Park need a boiler, Creston need a boiler, and so, maybe make sure that we address those major components in each school, and then, whatever remaining money, we can focus on Stony Brook. But, it would be terrible just to ignore the fact that they need a boiler and they need those major things, and we use all the money for just one location.
Yeah, agreed, and if I've given that impression, I apologize. By no means are we going to let a building's boiler fail, for instance. I anticipate that we're going to do some level of investment at all three of the buildings, but the deepest investment's probably going to be at 1, and so, there will be a balance to what this looks like, but most certainly, if we identify that the need is there for kind of that sort of major infrastructure replacement at any building, middle school or otherwise, we're going to take care of that.
You know, the reason I'm asking, we want to make sure that our students in every school is proud of their building and proud of their school, and we don't want them feeling that some schools are better than others and have more accommodations, you know, than others. So, when we walk into these middle schools, you know, like I was just disappointed when I went into that one middle school and they were having air conditioning problems and a lot of problems, we want to make sure that when we're renovating, we want to make sure that all of our students are being accommodated and feel comfortable and feel good about where they're going, and have the same opportunity as other students in other buildings.
Agreed.
So that's why I said, let's take a look across the board and not just focus on one building, and then neglect another.
Yep, and we've had folks from Schmidt in our buildings this very week at all three of our middle schools, studying all three of them in depth. We're going to receive an in-depth report on all three of our middle school facilities, and then we'll come to the board's recommendations on renovation projects based upon that assessment.
And I'm very proud that we did start addressing some of the issues at Creston. That was great, that's a great start.
Same, I wouldn't encourage anybody that hasn't been in Creston over the last year or two. That facility, it honestly feels so much brighter, so much fresher today than it did as recently as two years ago. The learning environment has really been transformed in that facility.
Because we were talking about marketing, and marketing is going to be important, and we want to feel, we want every parent that come to Warren to feel that they want their child to go to that school. We don't want them to say, "Oh, I don't want my child going to that school because they don't have this, 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 and this. I want them going here," and then we'll run into a problem with overcrowding in one or two buildings just because they lack it in this building. So we want an even playing, so that parents and students can feel comfortable no matter what middle school they go to.
Agreed. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to transition on, so as part of the public hearing for this process, we have to talk about two aspects, the construction aspect and then the financial aspect. So we're going to speak about just some materials we've got prepared from our partners at Baker Tilly. Baker Tilly is our financial advisor, they have a fiduciary responsibility to the school district to guide us through our bond issuances. So for the board and community's awareness, this is what our chart of existing annual debt service lease rental payments looks like. So, just at sort of the summary level, when we have a large construction or renovation project at any of our facilities, we sell bonds. Those bonds provide cash upfront, we use that cash to pay the contractors and design professionals, construction professionals that renovate our buildings. We pay back those bonds over a series of years. This is what our chart looks like from all the bonds that are outstanding today. You'll notice a distinct pattern, which is that the annual debt service payments drop pretty seriously over the next couple of years, which is where that room comes from to take on these projects we're talking about today. This is a list for the board's and community's awareness of what each of those individual bonds are and the dollar amounts we pay per year. This is a summary of what could happen with the bonds. Again, maximum $75 million borrowing amount, repayment term over a maximum of 20 years. I'll remind the board and the community, we've done varying lengths of repayment over time. Our GO bonds, some of them we've paid off as short as one year, two years, three years. Our last first mortgage bonds we sold, we're repaying over a term of 15 years. We'll determine that actual repayment term when we get to the fall of 2026, and we'll come to the board for that approval. Our debt service tax rate is 52 cents, most likely for 2026 in spite of property tax reform. We believe it's going to be able to stay at 52 cents in the years after that. By the time we go to sell these bonds, we'll have to have that conversation about what that looks like over the long term. This is just an overlay chart of what our existing debt would look like with this bond issuance put on top of it. You'll notice even with this bond issuance, at that maximum $75 million amount at what we think is a conservatively high interest rate, we still find ourselves a few years out with less than annual debt service than we have today, which provides room for future types of building renovations and construction projects. GO bonds take on small and medium-sized projects that could come up in any of our buildings. Board, I'd be happy to answer any questions about, again, the construction piece of this or about the financial implications, and if not, we'll move on to the next part of the hearing.
On the financial, I guess I missed it. Are you planning on going full speed ahead, using all that proposed money for that, or are we going to monitor and reduce, or, you know, I want to know how we're going to handle that?
Yeah, so that'll be definitely a piece that has board input. The parameters of the resolution, we're going to ask the board to adopt tonight, set a maximum $75 million. We're then allowed within that, all these again are subject to board approval, we're allowed within that to sell a series of bonds that total up to $75 million, one set of bonds at a single sale at $75 million. I think we're going to let that be driven by really kind of two distinct kind of factors. One of them is the construction element of it, so when we come back with construction estimates for how much it would take to do the jog centers and the middle school renovations and the work at the high school. The second piece of it is, by next fall, we're going to come back to the board with kind of some indication of the tax rate impacts from some of those decisions we can make, and I think at that point, we can decide whether we're going to go for the full 75 or something less. To me, at this point, the honest answer is they're both on the table, the full 75 or something below.
So you're saying we're voting on the full 75 tonight, or a reduced amount?
What we're asking the board to approve this evening is letting us move forward at a maximum amount of 75 million, but even at that, we can't proceed with selling the bonds themselves without the board's approval. The board's approval tonight is declaring that there's a preliminary need for the projects that are going to be funded by the bond proceeds. There's still board steps, and with lease rental bonds, school building corporation steps involved before we can actually get to the bond sale itself, so there will be additional opportunities for board input on the sale itself.
Can I ask you, when we discussed, is this the same, when we were talking about reduction, can you, I got a different understanding.
So, in our conversations, and you know, Matt's saying, tonight with the resolution, the board is authorizing up to $75 million. Once we get the project analysis back, that's going, I guarantee it's going to be more than $75 million. We can pretty much guarantee that. So we're going to have to prioritize those projects. We won't sell the bonds until...
Fall of 2026.
A year from now. At that time, we will have a year of impact, or almost a year of impact of the property tax, you know, outcomes of that. So at that time, we'll decide, do we sell half? Our conversation today was, in what we've been having conversation of, one way to approach this is we could sell half of it and do this round of construction projects, see how the property tax rules have impacted us, and then make a decision after that.
Now, I like that. Now, is that what we're going to vote on now?
No.
Using half of that?
You're author, tonight, and Matt, correct me if I'm not saying this correctly, but tonight, the board is authorizing a resolution that would allow us to borrow up to a maximum of 75 million. We may get to the fall of 2026, and they may change something in this upcoming legislative session that doesn't have such a negative impact on us, so we're not making that decision tonight. That will be ongoing conversation. As Matt mentioned, we will include the board in those conversations, and ultimately, you will approve it.
So, the half that you're talking about is just a thought? You're not saying that it will happen, it's just a thought?
It was a cautious approach to it, just to make sure that we're not overextending.
So why didn't we take that caution?
Because we don't know what the future holds yet.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the way I'm taking it is, we're setting up the maximum. Now, by setting up the maximum, that gives us a lot of flexibility, whereas, if we don't need that much, we'll do less, and then if we go along and we find we need more, then we can sell a little bit more. But just because we're asking for the maximum does not mean we're going to take the maximum.
Right.
We're going to play it as it comes out, and then...
By way of comparison, in 2018, I believe, the school board adopted, we went through the same process, preliminary determination process before we began Phases 1, 2, and 3, so the renovations of Lowell, Pleasant Run, Hawthorne, Eastridge, Grassy Creek, Warren Central High School, and that was set at, I believe, a maximum of $135 million or $130 million, $125, north of $100 million. And then within that, the school corporation came back to the board various times to sell the bonds to fund Phase 1, the bonds to fund Phase 2, and the bonds to fund Phase 3. What this resolution does, is it sets the maximum parameter for this kind of group of projects that we're pulling together, and I guess the piece I want to sort of emphasize again is, we can't sell the bonds even after tonight without the board's approval. There will still be board steps for the actual issuance of the debt itself. This sets the maximum parameter, so we know how we can proceed with even just planning for the projects.
Now, when you say maximum, you know, cost keeps going up and up and up, and I, you know, I keep hearing each time we come, "Oh, we need more, we need more, we need more," you know, so if we approve this 75, and then instead of reducing it, trying to work with it, we start talking about, "Oh, we need more," you know, keep coming back to the board, talking about, "We need more." So this is my concern, because as years go on, cost of living goes up, everything goes up, so it can be to the point where there is no stop, no limit, and that's my concern.
Sure, so if I wouldn't tell you otherwise, there will be future renovation projects that we're not contemplating, even through these projects right now. You know, there's, we may look up in five years, or six years, or eight years, and there's something in the school district that we need to address that's not contemplated here. I think when we consider that we have 3 million square feet under roof, we've got 11,000 kids that we serve, it's a lot of infrastructure that we have responsibility to maintain, and that leads to projects. You know, when we originally set these parameters at 75 million, before property tax reform went into place, the maximum, working with our financial advisors, we calculated that we could keep within that 52 cent tax rate was $150 million. Already, at that point, we scaled it back and said, "Let's go with half of that to preserve room for future projects within that debt service rate." The rules changed through property tax reform, so the $75 million is going to eat up a lot more of that debt capacity than we would have anticipated, but we already took that big kind of half bite off before we even brought the idea to the board, the $75 million. And then again, within that, we'll have ample opportunity for the board to have input on what the final bonds are in 2026, or whether we split it up in 2026 and future years.
So, basically... I don't have any other comments, but, you know, I'm just thinking that, you know, it's going to be a continuous, continuous, continuous.
We're not to that point yet.
And we need to try to focus on other things, you know, we renovated our buildings and things like that, you know, it's just like with your house, you know, you rebuild it and you remodeling and stuff, every year, you're not going to keep on saying, "Oh, and now I think I'm going to put a bull in the back, I think I want a sauna, I think I want this." No, it has to be a limit.
Well, right, that is what we're establishing right now. This is the first thing, we're not spending any money, we're talking about putting a cap on how much money we are going to borrow, up to this. Doesn't mean we're going to spend more, but like Matt said, here's our limit, 75 million. If we only spend 40, we're only going to sell $40,000 worth of bonds, and we won't even hit our cap of what we allowed him to set it at.
I think for clarity, and possibly this can help, next time our bonds is come up, if we're, maybe have a work session and sit down and kind of go through that for some clarity and understanding on what you're going to be looking at, what's going to be prioritized, that may help calm some of the unreadiness, because when you talk about seven, you know, million dollars, that's a lot of money, and as we're talking about being good fiscal agents and stewards, then I think that would kind of help through a board work session, because we can't figure this out right now.
And so you're asking us to take a vote on this, and like she said, you know, this is an item that really we needed to discuss a little bit more, so that we can decide. This is a lot of money.
Gloria, this is the second time this has come up, this is not the first time that this item has been discussed.
Board, the other mechanism that we would have to exercise is a capital referendum. So we would have to go to our community and ask them to contribute through a capital referendum. We have to maintain our buildings, and that's been a board goal, that's been a board direction that you guys have given us, to make sure that our environments are equitable across our district. And, you know, in this competitive landscape, and yes, you know, marketing is a part of that, but it makes no sense to market to our families if our environments aren't adequate or even above adequate. So this is a mechanism that all school districts use, they issue debt to maintain, to renovate, to provide a safe environment, both from heating and cooling and air quality, but also from a learning environment that we would all want our kids in. And this is the second part of the process, what we're asking the board tonight is to help us preliminary determine that there is a need, and I think we all agree that there is a need. And I think we all agree that there is a need to upgrade our intermediate middle schools. Whether it's behind the walls or inside the classrooms, there is a need to do that. Tonight, we're asking the board to allocate or to to approve up to seventy-five million dollars. Again, Matt's reminder of this process, when we went through this in two thousand seventeen, which I think a few of you were a part of that process, it was a hundred and thirty-five million. And Matt, I don't know how much we've spent of that initial piece, but close to it.
We we've used it.
Yeah.
We've used it.
And we've needed to, right? We've needed to, so yeah, I think, you know, LaShawna's point is well taken. It is a lot of information to process. With this being the second one, you know, we would ask the board tonight to approve that resolution.
One thing I will say is, I've always been very proud of how we've always been proactive on our buildings. We have always done summer projects and things to take care of our roofs and to fix things before they become really, really bad and it ends up costing us a lot more to fix it in the long run.
Matt, I'm sorry, were you finished? Ms. Gloria, because we do have to make a motion. You had made a statement that you would be more comfortable if what? I don't, I didn't write it down. If something was done, you made a statement.
What did you say?
You had made a statement when you were speaking to Matt, and I did not write it down, that you would be more comfortable with this vote tonight with a contingent, you said something.
I said I would be more comfortable if we continue to have a discussion on it prior to voting on it. I don't think that we're to the point of voting on it right now because there's some questions and concerns.
Voting on it or spending on it? Because we can, we can do two things, because we got a meeting on. We can vote on it with a stipulation before spending, however you want to phrase that. But we are giving the authorization tonight up to this amount with a spending clause that before spending is done, the board will have another meeting or work session.
Now, that sounds great.
We can do that, so we just need to make a, a, Madam President, I'm sorry. Do a motion.
I think that the motion is basically that because by making the maximum by by making the maximum, that doesn't mean we're spending it now. We're going to have to come back and vote again to actually spend it.
Right, but we can specifically say that instead of just saying so moved, we can specifically mention that just so it's on the record to move it along for Ms. Gloria's unreadiness at this moment.
And again, first, we need to get the preliminary hearing closed before we even get to the point where we as a board are voting.
Yes, I understand that.
Which is, yeah, we we need to get through the technical process of the preliminary hearing before we even get to the resolution.
Right, I was just, Madam President, if that was an option for Ms. Gloria, because she is still looking with a lot of unreadiness, once we get to the voting process, not seeing voting on it like right now at this instant.
Right.
You hold the gavel, I was just asking.
Well, we will, let's, let's get the hearing done first and then when it gets to an act, we can have discussion, just that we can close this.
Thank you.
And so my understanding, Matt, and correct me if I'm wrong, that in order to do this, my next statement is to open the meeting to the public to see if there are any questions or concerns from them, correct?
Yes, that's correct, President Burke.
Okay, and so I okay, so I'm going to do that. Are there any members of the public that wish to offer testimony or questions or concerns? And I'm going to need some help with that.
There is no one coming forward.
No, Madam President.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. So with that, I'm going to close the preliminary hearing. Having officially taken public comment, and there were not any. And then we will move on to action items, the first of which is resolution six forty-six point two five, ten, which is the ten twenty-eight preliminary determination resolution. And so Matt, I I'm assuming that you're not going to do yet an entire other presentation about preliminary hearing that we just did?
I I have no more presentations.
Okay. Okay, and so, yeah, I I think one of the things that we need to discuss before we amend the resolution is we need to make sure with the bond attorney that is there, that that is something we can legally stipulate, is my concern.
Yes, you can. I will add that legally speaking, nothing else can be done until the board meets at least two more times after this and approves two additional resolutions and has one additional public hearing. So that is already built into the legal process.
Can you, I'm sorry, Ms. Gloria. I think she's, the attorney is at the podium. She said something very important, so if you can listen to that and see if that will resolve your unreadiness, that's already built in and I'll let her put it in her legal language.
Yeah, so it's totally fine if you want to make that stipulation about having some kind of additional discussion prior to making any more approvals. I will add that legally speaking, nothing more can be done until the board has at least two additional meetings, approving two additional resolutions, actually three if you include the additional appropriation, and having one additional public hearing. So there are at least that many number of times that the board will reconvene built into the legal process. Nothing can be sold or priced or really moved forward at all. This resolution really just starts the process. It enables the board to consider it in more detail, you know, take the steps necessary to evaluate it further and see what projects are needed and how they want to price them and that kind of thing.
So we don't actually have to use it if we decide.
Correct.
Correct, this is just, that's the reason it's called a preliminary determination here. And I apologize for interjecting. Okay, so in order to get the process going, because LaShawna very well said very well, we need to to move along. Do I have a motion to, for the resolution?
I so I so move that we
So I have LaShawna making the
I so move that we accept
Continue, I'm so sorry.
The motion, that's okay, as written in the
Preliminary determination
The preliminary determination.
I will second.
Thank you, LaShawna, thank you, Terry. Is there any further discussion?
None is being brought to us.
Hearing any? Oh, okay.
I'll just say thank you to the lawyer that came up to say that we have more time, you know? So that make me feel better that we don't have to worry about spending that right now.
Oh, okay. Good. Is there any further, further discussion? I just want to make sure everyone has had the chance to say what they feel that they need to say. Okay, not hearing any, Kevin, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Gloria.
I have to be first.
Yes, go first.
I can't start myself.
Okay, only because the lawyer came up, I will say yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. LaShawna?
Yes.
And I'd be yes for myself and Madam President?
Yes. And with that, I believe the motion passes unanimously. So thank you, and I also do want to thank LaShawna and Gloria for making sure we will definitely be holding work sessions on this, especially once we determine, to help us determine what sort of work we need to do and what sort of total amounts we need to look at. Next, we have four policies, fifty-five hundred seventy-five oh or seventy-five forty and seventy-five oh four again, but slightly different. And they are with both Ryan and Kent. And I know that we are going to present these as one item, and so I don't know if they want to come separately or together, how they want to do that, but we're going to present those one item because they all kind of cover the same thing.
Like a ventriloquist act.
Which is AI usage.
We're side by side, President Burke, so we're going to present these as
Excellent.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, with obviously my good friend here, Mr. Schroeder. And we're, last month, we brought to you those policies for discussion all specifically around AI. Tonight, we're going to ask for them all to be approved, hopefully in one, one swoop. So we're happy to answer any questions if you have them, but at this time, we would like to ask for your approval.
Do I have an emotion, a motion to approve the four policies?
So moved.
Which one are you talking about?
So we're going to approve the student contact.
All four of them.
Contact, the artificial intelligence.
They are all in essence, the same thing, yeah, they all have to do with AI.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, so I heard Julie make the motion, is there a second?
I second.
Kevin.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Kevin, could you please take a vote?
Ms. Gloria?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Julie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry? Ms. LaShawna?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes for myself and Madam President?
Also, yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And those policies pass unanimously, thank you for your time, gentlemen. And now for the big, other big discussion items, I should say, beginning with Ms. Pope and our wellness policy.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the school board, can you hear me?
Yeah, there.
I just, I actually want to get quiet, I'm usually loud. I'm here to discuss policy eighty-five ten, which is our wellness policy. It is required to have, every school is to have a wellness policy. It is also required to review it every three years. And we're at that three years, the Wellness Committee, we met here in the spring and we made a few changes and I think you all have the changes in front of you. And I'm here to see if anybody has any questions for me. There's not many I changed, there's only a few, most of it was required. Any questions? All right, well, that was quick.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pope, for your time, we appreciate it, we will see you again tomorrow. And I have Mr. Clayton and the twenty-six, twenty-seven redistricting plan.
Good evening again, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board and to our Warren community. For discussion tonight, I ask that we engage in an important discussion about the future of our district's student placement and learning environment. Your insights along with community input are vital as we work together to shape a new direction for our district and continue to meet the needs of our Warren families for years to come. So as we have this discussion and we look at our school board goal as well as our strategic plan focus, again, it hits all of the focus areas. It's essential to recognize that our district's strategic plan is a foundation that will guide this redistricting effort. So part of this preliminary discussion is opening discussion, I want to reiterate that this is just an opening discussion for, for the board to have. We're going to provide you with information and and feedback and then we'd like to come back and continue this, this discussion in a month. But as we look at why redistrict now, what is the why behind that? And understand, we will refine this as we go through this process because there are some other things that will be brought up and will become part of this narrative as we communicate internally as well as externally with our community. So the time of, up for redistricting is driven by several pressing needs. Currently, our district faces significant enrollment disparities across elementary schools. We'll show you that with some, some charts here shortly. Addressing these discrepancies will now help us better utilize existing resources and prevent future overcrowding. Additionally, reintegrating fifth grade into elementary schools offers developmental and academic achievement benefits. We also need to elevate whether modifications to high ability services, service delivery and school start times could further improve educational outcomes. Acting now positions us to proactively shape and balance, innovative and be responsive as a district. So as we start taking a look at some of the initial pieces of, of data that we've prepared for you this evening, if you look at our current enrollment data, disparities are evident. Specifically, schools like East Ridge, Hawthorne, and Liberty Park have enrollments in the four hundreds, while others such as Pleasant Run and Grassy Creek are over the five twenties. So that's just probably the most clear disparity that we have, just elementary enrollment wise. Our goal is to create a more equitable distribution of students across the nine elementaries. By doing so, each school can operate closer to the optimal capacity, which we'll discuss that as well, around six hundred and twenty-five students or so. Depending on programming and by achieving this balance in enrollment with, will facilitate better resource allocation, provide more equitable opportunities for students and foster healthier, more cohesive school communities. Another part I want to mention, by equalizing enrollment, and again, we'll discuss this, it, it will provide opportunities to be creative, innovative at the, the, the IMS, well, potentially middle school portion of what we do educationally. So let's discuss our, our current reality. Historically, after the closures of Heather Hills and Morehead Elementary, those of us that were, that were here and we remember that back in two thousand nine, fifth graders were moved to the middle schools, which created our current IMS model, creating an intermediate structure. While this was necessary, a necessary response at the time, it has since presented challenges. The current intermediate middle school setup makes it difficult to provide developmentally appropriate experiences for fifth graders who benefit most from age-appropriate environments that support social, emotional, and academic growth. Our goal is to reintegrate the fifth graders into elementary schools, fostering stronger community bonds and offering tailored supports that meet their developmental needs. This is an exercise, this is a discussion we've had for decades. One of our alumni that showed up today, I'm sure you could tell us when the middle schools were seven, eight, nine, and the high schools was ten through twelve, and we had a different elementary model. So this is a, an exercise that, that we have every fifteen to twenty years and that's, that's why we're, we're here today. I had mentioned before that this shift will create more age-appropriate learning environment, strengthen elementary community culture and allow middle schools to focus more intentionally on the unique needs of grades six through eight. Board, we continue, this is an ongoing discussion in terms of what can we do as a district to be more creative and innovative in that middle school space? How can we really become much more intentional and focused in terms of what we provide academically? What can we do to retain our families? Because retention is a big portion of this as well. We believe by reintegrating the fifth graders back into our elementary schools, that will create those opportunities and we'll throw just some, you know, possibilities out there here shortly. So next, the next few slides, we're going to take a look at some, some, some enrollment trends. The current slide is from this past school year, our grade level enrollment. As you can see just the trend, starting with kindergarten all the way through twelfth. If I could specifically focus our attention, if we look at our K through twelve, I'm sorry, our If I could specifically focus our attention, if we look at our K through twelve, I'm sorry, our K through um four enrollment. And then when our fourth graders migrate to fifth grade, you see, once they get to that IMS level from fifth to sixth grade, you see a drop. That's probably one of the most noticeable noticeable drops, all right? And then you also see in the next couple slides, some trends as well. So if you look at our grade level enrollment, and we're specifically looking at that K through five. All right, if you look at that, over the past five years, enrollment trends have remained relatively stable. If you just look at the 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 total enrollment with some fluctuations. For example, K through five, um district-wise, enrollment has hovered around five thousand to um five thousand one hundred students annually. This consistency indicates a steady population, but the uneven distribution across schools calls for strategic redistricting. Analyzing these trends, which will be a part of this process, part of this discussion, we're looking at trends. Will help us anticipate future growth and ensures our planning and data inform and allowing us to make adjustments that serve students' best interests now and again for for years ahead. We'll have this conversation internally, but one of our our recommendations and one of our next steps is to bring in some experts, to bring in demographers, which have traditionally been a part of this process. Um, we are currently just having some brief preliminary discussions with some demographers that have been recommended to us. And again, this is very preliminary because obviously we want to make sure we introduce this and have this discussion and make sure this is the 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 time is right, this is the direction we want to go. Um, but uh if that's a process that we engage in, then we will be able to dig deeper into these numbers um and truly look at where we're currently at as a community and where we're gonna be at in the next five to ten years. But again, pay close attention to some of these trends as we go through the next couple slides, which will be very similar. So we can't have this discussion about reintegrating fifth grade back into the elementary schools without looking at retention. We talked earlier during the meeting, we talked about um ADM. We talked about being able to grow. That's one of, you know, one of the 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 factors that is going to be essential to our financial health moving forward. We can't afford to lose families. We have to make sure whether it's a transition from preschool to kindergarten, from kindergarten to um or I should say our K through four space to um our five through eight, or from the middle schools to the high school. During those transitions, we know that's when um statistically you lose the most students. So how can we ensure through this process that we somehow come back that? And I would invite you to look at this current slide, which illustrates that. If you start with the first um the first row there with kindergarten, and if you just follow all the way to when they're in fifth grade, it kind of gives you an idea of what that looks like as they, a kindergarten goes from um first to second to third to fourth to fifth. But what I specifically want you to focus on is those last two columns, fourth to fifth grade, okay? If you look at fourth to fifth grade, you see that A forty-nine. Well, when that fourth grader leaves one of our elementary schools, our K through four buildings, and goes to the fifth grade, which that starts our IMS, you see a slight decline in in enrollment. Okay, that, you may say that's not real significant. We're not talking about a hundred students. But then if you look at, again, you continue to look at that pattern from fourth to fifth grade. Eight fifty-eight to eight forty-six, the third under twenty-two, twenty-three, eight sixteen to seven ninety, while the gap gets a little bit bigger. But the one thing that's consistent, and we will continue to track that through this year, is that we are losing kids from fourth to fifth grade. Dr. Hanson shared with us at Cabinet that we have a total of three thousand students that live in our community that go to either a combination of other public charter or private schools, okay? So as we go through this process, this is gonna allow us not only again eternally, but as we engage our community, this discussion is, this is a, this is a a concerning um problem that we have that collectively we have to find a way to address. Based on what we are initially looking at, if we stay consistent and return back to the model that we previously had, and now our, um, and this is the same model. Actually, when my daughter went through as a Warren Central student, um, she was in third grade when we uh went to the intermediate school. So she she had four years or county kindergarten at Grassy Creek, um, five years. So she didn't have the opportunity to go to fifth grade at at Grassy Creek. Um, again, that happened going into her last year. But my point is, is that what we've learned since two thousand nine, we are losing students from fourth to fifth grade. We believe that we, this provides an opportunity for us to stabilize not only our population, our enrollment, another year, but it's also providing time for us to become more more creative in that six through eight space. And we'll talk about that here shortly. But I wanted to focus some attention on that because this is our reality. This is our reality. If we break it down by schools, we look at this, the the five-year trends, as you can see, starting with Brookview, um, East Ridge, Grassy Creek, Hawthorne, Lakeside, Liberty Park, Lowell, and Sunny Heights. You see the disparity, the discrepancies in terms of our enrollment. Again, you will see some schools that have grown that are well over five twenty. And if you look at their five-year average, and then we have a school um like Hawthorne. Again, we're not picking on Hawthorne and East Ridge. These these are just the numbers. Um, their averages are under four hundred. So the services we provide, the resources we provide at a school like, you know, for example, at um Grassy Creek with five twenty-eight, at Pleasant Run at five forty-two, we're providing those same resources at an elementary that has under four hundred students, okay? How can we make that more equitable? To make sure that we are truly maximizing and taking advantage of those resources that are, we know our students and families need. So the next question that we'll have a part of this this this, the the discussion is, do we have the capacity to do this? And based on our preliminary numbers, and again, we have administrators, we have leadership in here that were elementary principals prior to the transition in two thousand nine. And they were principals with buildings that had over six hundred kids, all right? We believe through our assessment, again, this is more of our hypothesis going into it. We believe we currently have the capacity to bring fifth grade in back in, reintegrate, I must should say, back into our elementaries. That is what we're going into this, and if you look at our our current five-year averages, and then you look at the the capacity, our projected capacity for the nine elementary buildings is at six twenty-five. Currently, we fall well below that. We fall well below that. Another thing I want to introduce or um I want to make sure that we include in this discussion is, the the belief is that, well, okay, if I'm at, you know, if I'm uh Pleasant Run and I have, you know, five hundred and sixty-two students, and you give me another three hundred students, I I don't have the capacity for that. By going through that redistricting process, that's not gonna happen because we're gonna make sure it's equitable in terms of the distribution and the numbers. You know, so again, we'll continue to to vet that out, but I just want to make sure I put that out there because as we have this this discussion with, you know, our community, these are the type of questions that they're going to ask. But we believe that based on the current utilization and the capacity, again, going to this process, we believe that we can make this transition back. We, again, we talk a lot about doing things creative and innovative at the middle school level. Part of the experience we had and the collaboration we had through that initial um Ford NGL um, you know, program that we did as a district, as we engaged in that exercise, part of that was, how can we create experiences K through twelve that will better prepare our our students for college and career readiness? And part of this, 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 this proposal, or part of what we're looking at through this this discussion, through this process is um, how can we not only just from providing the best teaching and learning environment and opportunities for our our students and our families, but competitively speaking, because let's just call it what it is, we are competing for families. We are competing to retain our families. We are trying to recruit new families. We have a lot of development in our township right now. Through this process, we're gonna find out which households have students. We want to know where they're going and why they're going there. We know we're getting hit hard in the charter space. We have to compete with charter schools, period. Because not only does that have an ADM impact, but we also know now, based on what Mr. Parkinson has prepared us for the last couple years, it also has an operational impact. We have to compete with them. We have to compete with Irvington. And where are we going to do it, and where we're going to succeed, and where we're going to win, is going to be in that six through eight space. We believe that this will provide us an opportunity to get creative. And this is just an idea, and again, please don't ta- oh, you guys are gonna turn, like, this is just something with a possibility because it's, there's endless possibilities based on the good work that we've done the past few years. For example, this redesign experience provides a strong, will provide a stronger focus again on college and career readiness and hands-on learning opportunities. And as you can see here, this is a possibility. Stony Brook Middle School could become our STEM school, uh STEM school, all right? And again, this is part of the discussion. We know that we have to prepare the next generation of learners to compete in a workforce that's going to integrate AI more and more. Is that, that's a possibility. We can create some type of program, college and career readiness program, that focuses on artificial intelligence. That's, and again, these are just examples. These are just ideas. But these are things that are gonna allow us to compete in this current educational school choice environment. We have to be creative. We have to be different. We've had a lot of conversations around it. We have a lot of highly intelligent people in this room right now that are ready for this challenge. And by engaging in this conversation, this will allow us to to really dig deep to see what best fits our school district, what best fits our community, and most importantly, through engaging in our community's conversation, what do they want? What do they feel like we should put in place to better prepare their kids for the next step? Our third goal, goal is to ensure a stable and consistent learning environment for all students. In other words, we want to, we want to create, and Ms. Gloria, you spoke to this earlier. We want to, we want to make sure that we have consistent learning environments. Doesn't matter what school you go to. It doesn't matter what side of the district it's on. We want to make sure that when it comes to teaching and learning, that everything is consistent. So we want to make sure that we provide the resources and opportunity to do that. And this involves balancing resources, maintaining manageable class sizes, and providing seamless educational educational experiences. And I want to go through just one example, um, what we do around high ability. Right now, our current model, as you know, because we've had discussions. I know, uh, President Burke, you've you've been heavily involved in this discussion over the years and around just high ability. And right now, we have three schools, three elementary schools, um, that house our high ability program, okay? So if we look at what this can be in terms of reintegrating the fifth grade back, this provides us with the opportunity to offer these programs at all nine elementaries. That's that's when we talk about equitable equitable access, being able to offer, again, being consistent, creating that consistent learning environment, it provides us with the opportunity to offer those programs in every, at every elementary building. Okay, now, I have Lynn Storm here. She's back there smiling because what we currently have to do, we have to shuttle those those students. Once they arrive to their, technically their home school, we have to shuttle them to another school where they will receive that, those high ability um services. That's, 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 we're, we're working hard, we're getting results. But when we talk about operational efficiency, it provides opportunities to have discussions. How can we be more efficient operationally? This presents this opportunity. The fourth goal, and part of this is we're, you know, how can this affect or potentially change our school start times? We may go through this this exercise, have this discussion, and we may remain where we're at right now. We know where we stand right now. We have three tiers. We know the high schools from seven fifteen to two P M. We know an hour later, we bring our elementary students in at eight fifteen. And then our third tier is at nine fifteen with our intermediate middle schools, all right? Again, this will provide us an opportunity to review our current um, our current procedures, our processes, um, our our policies around what this looks like. We know that if we're transporting kindergarten through fifth graders, we know that's going to kind of change how, you know, what those each tier looks like. Our elementary is still our our biggest tier, but we know that that's going to add to it a little bit. So again, what does that look like? Okay, it's always a healthy discussion. We we have discussions every year around school calendars and and make slight adjustments to start times. Again, it'd be a great opportunity to revisit that. Next steps, we will continue, we we, again, we introduced the why. We will continue to refine that because there is also um academic achievement data that will also support this this proposal, this recommendation, to seriously consider this. And I know, um, Mr. Russell and I have had that conversation, and um, to be honest with you, as we refine this, that might be one or two as we take a look at it, you know, academic outcomes. But we'll continue to re- refine the why. We'll conduct preliminary data analysis, which we showed you um a few pieces of that tonight. Once we get your approval, we're going to establish a redistricting committee, which will be essential. And that will consist of not only our building leaders, we'll involve our teachers, we'll involve community members. Um, this is going to be a community initiative. This needs to be a community decision. Again, we've had some preliminary discussions with demographers, but we would like to hire a a a demographer. We'd like to bring a a company, a firm in to assist us in this process. And we've already got some pretty good recommendations. Once we, if if it with your approval, um, when we get to that point, um, they will help us dig deeper into that data collection process. Um, one of the things that was was brought up the other day, just in, just a random discussion, just around our families. We have families in our district, um, I should say, multi-families that live um at one address. So as we engage our demographer in conversations, we want to make sure they can, they can capture that. Because if they're able to to capture that, that gives us a better idea of exactly what that that redistricting process needs to look like, what our resources need to reflect, um, operationally, so on and so forth. Community engagement is going to be very important. We will need to engage the community multiple times. That's why if this is, as you see, this is a, this would be, this recommendation would would start in twenty-six, twenty-seven, which would be a year from now. So we will need to engage the community multiple times. So Ms. LaShawna's point, we have to be creative in what that looks like. We have to invite them in. We'll have to go to them. We'll have to utilize social media. We'll have to pass things out at churches. I mean, whatever we have to do to bring our community in, to be a part of this discussion because this, this is a, this is an important decision. This is an important decision, and just from our experience, and I know Dr. Hanson was on the committee back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, um, we had some great turnouts. We had some great turnouts. I know I, as a parent at the time, I know many of us were there um as part of those discussions to see how that's going to impact um our our students. Develop redistricting options and and have that discussion with with the board. Um, we want to refine and finalize our redistricting plan. And again, this is, this is aggressive, all right? But we want to make sure as we approach two thousand twenty-six, the second, the second semester of this current school year, that we are in planning stages. So we would like to bring a recommendation to the board in December. Okay, in order for that to happen, again, all these steps need to take place. The engagement, working with our demographer, working with our, again, our community to make sure, and and we're, most importantly, preparing our buildings. We will need a a a good semester just in preparation, building-wise. This isn't something we can, you know, do in May and just, you know, hey, all right, we got basically six weeks to 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 get everything. This isn't something we can, you know, do in May and just, you know, hey, alright, we got basically six weeks to, to, to get everything together so we can bring a whole nother class of fifth graders in. Okay? And then, again, what I was referring to was that, that implementation planning. Along the way, it's important, when we look at our norms, we, we have to be transparent. That's important. We have to maintain open communication along the process. We don't want any parents to feel surprised. We don't want anyone to feel like they didn't have a voice in this process. There's legal considerations that we need to look at as well as it relates to state and federal laws. And again, that's, that's part of our, our why is when we look at equitable and non-discriminatory, a non-discriminatory process. And then as well as just the data security, because we will dig deep into our analysis by looking at, you know, family, student-type data. We wanna make sure we're sensitive to that. Again, I know that's a lot of information in a short period of time, but for discussion right now, board, if you just have any questions in terms of anything you would like us to add to the discussion.
This is, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, this is just gonna be ongoing discussion, including our families, our community. So you're just making us aware of this today, which I appreciate. I think that making sure our families know that we're considering this and that we're taking all the, a look at everything. I know one of the big things we were concerned with minutes being lost when we were moving, transferring our gifted students to the other schools and talking about that transportation where they were losing fifteen minutes at the beginning and fifteen minutes at the end of the day. So I'm hoping that that also gets equitable as well.
Yeah. And, and, and Terry, you, you also know that if you go back when we did this a while ago, some parents are just simply uncomfortable with their students going to an IMS, a fifth grader on a bus with an eighth grader. Just something, you know, again, it, that, that's a big deal. And that, you know, as we go through this process, is that, is that a reason we're losing kids from fourth to fifth grade?
I just wanted to, you know, I'd like your thought process and everything. But in talking about redistricting, I've been sitting here too, too long. I can't hardly talk. I think it poses a red flag, a problem. First of all, you know, we have a problem with teacher shortage. And you're talking about bringing a lot of more people, students into the district. So right now, Brian is telling us he has a problem trying to recruit teachers. We can't find enough teachers. Our classroom sizes are too large as it is. We need to focus on reducing classroom size so that our children can learn. So you're talking about bringing in more, but we need to deal with what we already have. We have new housing units that are being developed. So that means more and more students are gonna be coming from those, those units. So I feel that we need to market what we already have so that we can maintain our enrollment and we can at the same time encourage others to want to come. Hopefully one day we'll have a waiting list. How do we do that? Some of the things that you suggested, we are, at this point in time, our high ability students, they have to be transported to a different school. Well, when I was teaching high ability class at, in IPS District, there was a high ability class in every school. So why can't we do that? I taught high, I was in an elementary school and I taught high ability class. So if we teach, have a high ability class in every school, then that will keep us from having to transport students. So what I'm suggesting is let's take what we have and make it better. We don't wanna try to start adding, adding, adding and redistricting, and we can't accommodate what we have already. Our teachers are complaining now about class size. You know, we have things that we have to address first. There was another good suggestion by taking our middle schools and making them attractive. Like one school could be a STEM school. One school can be a health, you know, career school. One school can be trades. Every student is not going to college. Every student, they can develop a skill trade, whether it's a plumber, electrician, you know, welding. Something that when they graduate, they can walk out into the workforce and be valuable. Every student needs some kind of skill. Even if they plan on going to college, a lot of our students don't even finish college and then they find themselves working at Family Dollar. Our students need to be equipped with skills that they can take to the workforce. So the idea that you had the middle school starting there, we can make them attractive by having them to be different schools, STEM, you know, health, you know, your trade schools. That way, we're making what we have better. By redistricting, I think you're just compounding on, on, you know, the problem. You're, you're bringing problems in. We, we are great here in Warren Township. You know, we have a lot going on. We're renovating our buildings. That's being attractive, you know? We, we have great programs for our students, whether it be sports, and we wanna try to build upon that. What we have, we wanna make what we have better so that it will attract more parents to want to come to our district. By redistricting, I think it's just gonna cause a problem. And with class enrollment, teacher recruitment, everything, and we're back where we started. So that's just my idea. And would you go back to that page where you were showing how the enrollment was increasing and decreasing? Yes. In twenty twenty-one, it was eight eighty-five, and that was the beginning of COVID. I'm looking at fifth grade. We, we went from kindergarten to fifth. I'm stopping at fifth. Twenty-one, twenty-two, we were just still struggling with that COVID. So yes, it went down, because that's the time, remember, people started doing online and, you know, things like that. And they were introduced to, you know, online teaching and working and stuff instead of going in to the classroom. Then in twenty twenty-two, people began to catch their breath, and you notice fifth grade went up to eight forty-six. Now, in twenty twenty-three is the only time that I see that we really fell down low to seven ninety. And what reason that is, we don't know. But we went back up in twenty-four, twenty-five to eight twenty-five. So we're still on a trend going up. I am just saying that we're not just totally going down totally in our enrollment. What we have, we need to build upon it so that we can attract more students. So instead of focusing on redistricting, we need to do more marketing.
Ms. Gloria, Ms. Gloria, I think you, the, this is really more about redistributing what we have, not adding, not going out and bringing more students in, that he was focusing on making the, each school, he showed the disparity between one school from another is distribution.
Say distributing, you said redistrict.
Well, you have to redistrict. No, 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 no. You have to redistrict the boundaries for each school to get them equal. That's the goal. Grassy Creek is at five twenty-eight, and some schools are still at four hundred. So he's talking about redistributing the zones.
Now, when some of those students that, that have a high enrollment to go to the low enrollment school. Okay, but not necessarily changing the location that these kids are coming from.
No, that's not.
No, no.
And if I can.
No, we, we can't legally do that on our own, Gloria. We can't discharge her on our own. That's, that's, that like involves the state and a lot of other things. This is the boundary line within the whole district.
If I can provide some content, Ms. Gloria, during my time when I went around to the schools during my presidency, a lot of this, I first wanted to thank you, Superintendent, and Marcus in the cabinet for acknowledging some of the concerns that the principals were having and the community with the fifth graders being in our middle schools and the high ability losing. Because when you say fifteen minutes a day, mm, it really doesn't sound like a big deal until you add up all of those minutes, which actually is a half an hour per day. So they're missing a lot of instructional time. So this plan is to help balance all of that out. Not going outside of our district. We can't go outside of our district boundary lines. But within our district, we can even out our district boundaries to make our schools more comparable in numbers. So it would kind of reduce. And our fifth graders are missing so much developmental stages that they need because they're in the middle school and the middle school, they still need recess. The middle school is not equipped for that. So moving them back to the fifth grade is a great idea. And a lot of parents, you know, have decided, oh, my child is not going to the sixth grade. So that's what we're doing. So not necessarily, we're not going outside of our district, bringing in outside district.
Okay, well, that's good. Because when I thought about redistributing, that's what I started thinking about moving, you know, your boundaries lines and things like that.
You weren't listening. The man didn't say that.
I know. But you know what? It is a great idea to put our fifth graders back in elementary school. That's the way it has always been. And I hear a lot of parents concerned about that, you know, having them in the, you know, with the older kids. So I think that's a great move on our part. What we have to still be concerned about is class sizes, you know?
Gloria, I hear everything you're saying. And I think that considering what Marcus was saying about making sure that we were giving everyone enough time and the schools enough time to prepare for the next year, would there be an interest in putting forth a motion to allow for the operations department in the district as a whole to start this planning process, understanding that we would have to approve anything that they decided upon in December? So this is not approving what would, what kind of the end would be, but putting forth a motion to get this process started so that we can start it as soon as possible so that we can make decisions and keep people informed as ahead of time as much as possible.
Ms. Madam President, this is just for discussion today, but I do have a question for next month. With that.
No, I, I, I understand. I'm, I'm saying, do we have the, this is for discussion this time because it is not a policy. It is merely opening up the subject matter to having something brought to us in the future, having the possibility of going ahead and voting on having it looked at now to keep the process going even faster.
Are you saying we're gonna have an executive session to go over all of this? Or instead of in a board meeting? What are you saying?
So there, there are two different things that have to take place, Gloria. We need to determine that we want to start looking at this. And then whatever is found out, so we hire a demographer, we do all of those things, then we vote on what those results are. But that does not take place at the same time. I mean, it would not take place in an executive session. This is all public.
Okay, another concern. We're talking about all these changes and how it's gonna affect us financially and how we have to budget and how we have to use our money. And then at the same time, you're telling me, oh, we're gonna hire somebody to try to show us how this would be. To me, we need to focus on prioritizing our spending. So when, that's not a red flag. When you start talking about, oh, we're gonna hire somebody to work with us on this, we need to focus on how we spend our money. We, we, he just gave a report about how we're gonna be losing funds. So why would we hire somebody and spend this extra money to do this? So this is what I'm saying. We need to prioritize our spending.
Ms. Gloria.
That's my, that's my.
I understand what you're saying too, but we will not make a decision final until December when they have all the evidence. But I do feel like we do need to hire somebody because if we do wanna make our middle schools attractive and we wanna have a STEM school, we wanna have an arts in school, or we wanna have this school, we need somebody like this to help us get our information to see what our community and what our kids and our families need and want.
I understand what you're saying, Terry.
So I think it, it has a potential to grow our numbers.
Can I just say this one thing? I understand what we want. But he just said that because of changes that are occurring with, and money that we're losing, we can't just go with everything we want. We have to prioritize our spending right now. And I'm just saying, we have to take a look at what's, what's most important and what's least important. All of it is really important, but we just have to prioritize. Because on a, on a normal, you know, year without all these changes, tell them, we would be able to do whatever we wanted, right? But now, he is saying that, oh no, it's gonna be more changes. So why are we adding more cost when we're gonna have to lose some of them?
So, um, this is a discussion item. So, this is a discussion item. So let's think about it and then let's talk with Matt and Marcus and Dr. Hanson as we are figuring things out. I do wanna say though, I was, my first year on the board was the year we pulled the fifth graders from the elementaries and put, and we had the intermediate academy separate from the middle school. And then we had the high school. And I can tell you, we lost parents that year. We lost a lot of parents because there were so many parents, and you're right, they didn't wanna put them on the bus with eighth graders because there is a big difference between a fifth grader and an eighth grader. And we lost a lot of parents then. And I can see it saving us up. Because when you're looking at that one chart, it, you're looking at it a little bit wrong. It was the diagonal numbers that you should have been looking at on it. And you could, and you can still see where we were losing from fourth to fifth grade because we lost, that one year, it was like eighty, we lost like fifty students, basically. Where did, yeah, eight sixty-two to eight twenty-five. That's a lot of kids right there. So I, I, that was a tough year. The state lost, well, they misplaced or whatever, three hundred and fifty-six million dollars and we had to lose. It was up to us to lose four million. And it was closing those two schools that, that we went with, and that's when we changed things. But then we also learned from that. We learned that keeping those two schools separate, the two, the intermediate and the middle wasn't quite the best way. So we threw them all together as one school. It made it a little bit better, but we're still having the same problem. We're still having a lot of those problems and those fifth graders are still losing out. And I think pulling them back to the elementary school is a good plan. And I, I really think we need to look at this. I mean, what this is saying, we are not saying it's going to happen. This is giving, we will be looking at it and we will be taking all these months to check and see what, if this is the right thing for us. And maybe one part is and another part isn't, but it's something that we really do need to look at. It's just something that needs to be done. And it's probably needed to be done for a couple, three years, but it's something that's hard to do because when you start talking redistricting and moving kids from one elementary to another elementary, because you're gonna have kids that are, have been in maybe Liberty Park for their kindergarten, first, second grade. And then they're gonna have to go to Lowell or Hawthorne for their fourth, fifth, sixth grade, or fourth and fifth grade. And that's, that's the tough part too, is because they've built a home in that elementary school and now they're having to go to another one. And it's always hard to do that. And so it's our nature to put that off as long as possible because we know that's a tough thing. But at some point, it comes a time where we have to, for the good of all of our kids, we have to start looking at that. And I think it's now. So it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen, but it's time to look at it at least.
I agree with you.
Ms. Gloria, I'm sorry. Madam President, did you put a motion on the floor? I thought I heard you saying something about a motion, and I just wanna make sure if you were entertaining a motion that's not lost in the translation. So can you clarify? Because you kind of froze.
I was asking if, yeah, I'm so sorry. I was asking if there would be any interest in putting forth a motion as to having the district start looking at this now, buy them another month? Because as Marcus said, we would need to make a decision by December.
So you are entertaining a motion.
I, I'm asking if people would like to entertain a motion, yes.
I, yeah, we have a couple more comments. Can I just, okay, I, you know what? Can I just, okay, I, you know what? I agree with you Julie saying that definitely taking a look at putting the fifth graders back, I have no qualms with that. What I do have a problem with hiring someone, we have a lot of intelligent people in our system. You know, why we have to go hire somebody, another brain and spend all that money to try to have them to come in to help us with this? We have capable people and that's money. That's what my concern is. We don't need to spend that money.
Gloria, if I can, we, when, when, I don't know if you remember when we were meeting to put together the strategic plan and meeting with Ford and we broke into the different groups and I was on the family and community relation group. And one of the things that that group felt very, very strongly about was the need to bring in a demographer and it covers several things. First of all, we don't know how many fifth graders are going to be in the area between Washington and Troy and Franklin and Post in 20 years. A demographer, well, in five years, a demographer has that, has the knowledge to be able to put something like that there. We don't know how many students are going to be in our district that don't speak English as their first language in 10 years. A demographer can help with that. They can help us make sure that when we draw the lines, we're drawing good lines that will last a long time so that we're not doing this again and for this. There's, and I, I don't think we're discussing spending a ton of money, but it, it, it's not something, it, to be frank, it is not something we have anyone in this school district that can do, which is the reason that we brought it up for discussion, whatever that was, three or four years ago even. That is a, it is a very specific scientific subset, unfortunately.
Okay, let me, let me just say, for, let me say this. This was just supposed to be a discussion. We're not supposed to be making a motion to do anything, to go anywhere for any approvals right now. He's got, he's already mentioned that some of these numbers here are numbers that were, I broke down here, samples. Because the, for example, the sixty, the six thirty-two and six twenty-five, I think you had as a capacity, you just said that was, that was, to me, that was just sample. You said that wasn't an exact number. And there were other areas in here and in the, in the discussion that were not accurate. You had, you got more work to do. And I don't think we need to be making a motion to, to, to approve it. He's got, he's got work to do to get us to where we think, our biggest challenge is going to be transportation. So I, I think there's more work to be done.
I was not suggesting that we vote to redistrict today. We do not have that ability nor that knowledge. But if we want to start the process to have the district look at it.
Yeah.
Do we really want to wait a month to even start the process?
Madam President, I, I, I agree.
That's my question.
And it, and it goes along with what Mrs. French was trying to say as well. And it is just, he, he's got to go look at this stuff. He's got, he's got more to look at. When, when we can, we can say that, go ahead and go look at it, but we're going to have to come back together later after he's got some more defensive numbers.
Right, yeah, no, no, a hundred percent. I'm saying let them go look at it. I apologize if I am not being clear.
So Madam President, I make the motion to allow the team to start looking at redistricting and everything that's been presented today.
Is there a second?
I second. And, and can I make a comment? I'm seconding that we are going to go look at it because that's what we're trying to say now is we're, by doing this motion, if it passes, it's giving them permission to start looking at it. No decisions will be made. They're going to go look at it. They're going to figure it out. Then they're going to come back and say, okay, we've looked at it. This is what we see about transportation. We've looked at it. This is what we see about redistricting. We've looked at it. This is what we're going to see about this and that and the other. It's, we're not making a decision today. The only decision we're, we're making today would be to go look at it.
So usually when we have discussion items, we don't, we just let them talk and they sit down.
Every once in a while.
So why are we, why are we trying to make a motion now? That's what I'm saying. This is different. We shouldn't even.
Because this is on such a, if I may, it, it's because we want to be able to start talking to our families and, and make sure we're bringing them in. And we want to give that conversation as much time as possible before we have to make a decision. We need to make a decision, as Marcus said, really in December. And so the earlier we can start talking to our families, the earlier we can start engaging them in the conversation to find out what their wants and desires are, to have those community forums. If you were in the district, last time we redistricted, like Marcus said, we had several community forums. I attended, I think, two of them as a parent. We want to give our community as much time as possible to offer input.
And I would just add to that, part of that engagement and dialogue, we have to provide some information, we have to provide data. And that's why going through this process and being able to continue to flush out exactly where we stand, what are the trends and even potential concepts of what that redistricting would look like, that's what we would have to present to our parents as part of that community engagement. Now, after going through that, they may say, we hear you, but you know, my, I don't want my kid to leave. I don't want my kid to go anywhere. But in order for us to even have that discussion, we, we just can't go to them with the proposal. We have to go to them with accurate information. And you know, as we recommended, bringing in a demographer that's going to help us take a deeper dive into exactly what this would look like if we, if we go this route.
I think that with all this discussion that we've had on the board, my recommendation is that we have some kind of executive session or something.
We can't do this as executive. It breaks the open door law.
We, we can't have an executive session on this.
Okay, so, because I'm trying to think how we can come together as a board, a work session. Okay, whatever, okay, work session, I'll change that. We need a work session where we can come together as a board, get a better understanding, give our views and things like that before we take any kind of vote to move forward with anything.
Ms. Gloria, I'm sorry. We have a motion on the floor that's been first and second. So we have to go through and fulfill this before any more motions. Either the motion is going to go through, it's going to be withdrawn. So we can't put another motion on the floor right now because one has already been made.
Okay, we're both on that. And then I'll put the motion that we do a work session.
You cannot put the motion. You have to wait a minute to see if this pass or go.
We'll wait until after this one, okay?
Okay. And we can, and we can do both Gloria. There, there's no reason we can't. But is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Kevin? I don't know. Did someone have discussion? I heard something, but I couldn't tell.
Nobody. Nobody said anything.
Okay, thank you.
I feel like right now that we, I, I'm having a discussion because at a point, we want to make sure that this is just moving forward. That is the only motion that I made is to continue moving into looking at the data. That was my motion, seconded by Julie. In our discussion, we did to say that we were going to have a study group to go through this or a work session to go further into what we have as a board. But right now, we're just, I'm asking, I'm making the motion to let the district keep going forward and to going into finding out more information.
Oh, I think that that should come after our work session because after we talk about it and we get a better understanding, then we can vote about moving forward for them to go into, you know, gathering more information. I think you're, you're putting the horse before the cart.
All right, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And then I want to make a motion that we have a work session so that we can discuss this and then we will come back and then we will vote on moving forward. Can I get a second?
Is there a second?
Madam President, did you, she withdrew, she withdrew her motion, but did you?
I, I heard that. I asked, yes.
Did you kill that motion on the table?
I asked if there was a, yeah, I asked if there was a second for Gloria's motion.
I'm, I'm confused right now. Are we on, Terry has.
Well, if Terry withdrew her motion, then it doesn't exist. Right.
There's no motion on the table.
So there's no motion? That's, I just wanted to make sure that everybody has that understanding. There's a lot of talking and motioning back and forth. So we're all clear. That motion is dead. So now it's back into your hands, Madam President. Can you instruct us further? Thank you.
I made a motion.
Yes, right. Gloria made a motion requesting a work session. And so I asked if there was a second.
Y'all second me.
Well, I mean, Gloria, just because it.
Well, we need, we need to, we, if, you know, this is important. Can we get a second?
I'm not going to second it.
Well, if there's not a second, then there's not a motion.
Then I'm, then I'm going to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we move ahead with this process, which will include a work session with the board.
Is there a second to that?
There is two seconds, actually.
Did some, I couldn't. Okay, can, thank you, Howard. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Kevin, can we have a vote on Julie's motion?
Ms. LaShana.
Obstain.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Julie.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Ms. Gloria.
Obstain.
And I will be a yes, Madam President?
Yes. And that motion carries five a's and two abstentions. And we will get that work session on the books for probably late July or early August. I'll check with everyone's calendar and come up with something. Okay, and I do believe with that, I've been having some internet because obviously I've been obviously cutting in and out for which I apologize. With that, we are at closing comments. And Kevin, I will start with you.
Well, first and foremost, I think we have to say that we have an action board and we take our job seriously. And we, we work things out. So as you can see here, we just don't, can't say board meetings are boring and we do nothing but just agree, agree, agree and sign, sign, sign. So we work it out, we explain things out. And it is, a lot of things are complicated. So it goes back and forth and once we get a clear understanding of everything, we can move forward. But the biggest sign is we do work here and we get work done and nothing is easy is ever worth doing.
Ms. Triplett?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Board, for a discussion. Thank you, Coach. Bring it in. We do like to do things decent and in order. I think all subjects are not just a rubber stamp. So I do appreciate that about the board. We will get it together when everyone has a clear understanding. I would like to say, Julie, I will, I serve on the Marion County Youth Violence Prevention Coalition and we do distribute gun locks and we do have someone that trains. We do training for gun safety. So if you are interested in having the coalition to protect in the safety forum, please get with me. We would love to help support in that area. Parents, staff, please be vigilant. Our babies are in a war zone right now. When we bring all of this together, we are losing them daily. So let's please be aware, look at the warning signs, reach out to help, reach out to MCRC if you have a student that is exemplifying different behaviors, even in the recent killings. We've lost a warrior. So let's continue to just be vigilant and love on our babies. Please, please, please. We don't want any more deaths. We have big events coming up this weekend with Black Expo and the WNBA. Let's bond together for whoever you serve and pray to or whatever your form of higher belief, that we put a protection around our babies in our community. They're struggling. They need us. They need us as whole adults, not half. So I extend that to you and as a staff, reach out to us if you need some self-care or some additional mental health support so you can be whole, so are, you're able to be a whole person to our babies. Enjoy your, the rest of your night. Thank you.
Kevin, I really appreciate what you said and same with you, LaShana. I know that we are in federal dollar crunches and things like that, but we, like Kevin said earlier, we have weathered the storm before and we will weather this one. I'm really excited with us looking forward for our district to make sure that, I know we have teachers that believe that maybe some of our kids do need to be in the fifth grade or in the elementary schools too. I'm giving just the opportunity to relook at all of our district. It's going to be educational, I think, for us as a board and for our community. But thank you, everyone. I look forward to seeing everyone, staff and the kickoff on Wednesday. I hope you enjoy the rest of your summer. Thank you very much.
I would like to just go back and reiterate on the safety fair, just a short thing. We definitely are trying to protect our kids from guns. I mean, I saw enough kids getting shot. I was tired of it. So I texted Tim and I said, Tim, I can't take this anymore. I want to do something about it. I want to do a safety fair and I want to include this. Is that okay? In the meantime, Tabitha Jackson was sending an email to Tim saying basically the same thing where her kids were actually in classes or in the same school at least with, with one of the families. And so he put us together and we took off with this and we are running and we're not stopping until October 25th at noon plus cleanup. So we, this is very important to us. And if you have any suggestions, thoughts, just email me and it's, it's not just a gun, but it's also every other aspect of safety. We've got a nice big plan, so thank you. That's it. Welcome back to school.
If you're a, a gun owner, please secure your weapons so that they don't begin, so they don't, so they're not in, in contact with kids. If you're a gun owner, you are responsible and accountable for how their weapon's being used. Just want to say, enjoy the rest of the summer and we've got first day coming around the corner.
I'm going to shoot back in here real quick. I just want people to understand, we are not advocating taking guns away from people. There are quite a few gun owners out there, I'm sure in this room, let alone the community. We are just advocating safe storage of them so that our kids don't accidentally pick them up and a five-year-old shoot a three-year-old sibling.
Well, this has been a very interesting evening. As you can see, as it has been said, that we are really involved in what we do and we really care about what we do. I must apologize for all the discussion and holding you here so long. I really apologize. Normally.
Normally, uh, when you see on your bulletin it says discussion, usually we let the people come up and discuss and then we don't give a comment, we might ask a question or two, but we wait and maybe have a, a work, uh, work session or something to discuss it. But tonight, we did, got into it, I guess, compared, um, we hadn't been together for a while, so we just all started talking and talking, but normally we would just let the person talk and then we would come together in a session and discuss it. So I apologize, cause I, I don't like having to get into these kinds of discussions, you know, uh, at our board meetings. So I apologize for all of us and, um, hopefully moving forward, we will do that in the future. If we have, you know, concerns and stuff, we're gonna immediately say, okay, I think this, this calls for a work session and then that way we won't have to bore you with our conversation. I would like to also say in regards to, uh, all the violence with our young people, I'm a, uh, not only a retired teacher, but I'm a retired school counselor and I went around to different schools, developing programs to teach our children. You know, our kids are used to watching video games and in the video games, it's a lot of violence, shooting, shooting, shooting. So they tend to remember what they see and they need, they tend to act out what they see. So it's gonna take a lot of talk and a lot of reteaching and, and focusing on non-violence. We had a program that I started, uh, with all of my middle schools and high schools and elementary schools and it was called Project LEAD. That means, uh, legal education to arrest delinquency. And this program came from Purdue University and what it did, it had law enforcement, judges, juvenile centers, um, gun control people, everybody we could think of that was related to violent act, they would come and talk to the students. They would talk to them about guns and how to, uh, solve their differences, they would talk to them about consequences. We even took the kids to jails, we took them to courtrooms and everything, just to see people that were in trouble because of guns. We wanted to make them aware, we even took them places where, uh, people were locked up and the, some of the prisoners talked to them and said, hey, this is not the way to go. So that's, it was great education and at that particular time, yeah, we had incidents, but you never saw a lot of this gun violence on such a large scale as it is now. And I think that it worked, so we need to try to get back to that. So as we were sitting here talking about what can we do, my mind started going back to the old days when we had that legal education to arrest delinquency. So that's something that I'm going to try to work with, uh, our Board and Superintendent to see if we can get that going again, cause our children are definitely worth saving. So I just thank you all for coming out tonight and you just have a safe travels home and we look forward to seeing you at our next session. Hope we didn't scare you off. Thank you, bye-bye.
All right, and then finally, um, first of all, I would like to thank the technology department. It is, um, somewhat surreal that although it is, I think, ten o'clock there, it is two in the morning here, although the sun is shining brightly and I have been able to participate, so I want to thank technology for all that they do in making sure that that can happen. And I also want to say thank you to LaShawna. Um, we've been discussing gun violence a lot, especially in the closing comments and our opening comments because of current events. And last year, she really spent a lot of time turning her focus onto mental health and it is important to remember the connections between mental health and, um, gun violence, whether it is against oneself or ones others, and that those lines are drawn very strongly. As she said, if you see something, say something, keep an eye, look out for warning signs. That is just as important a message, um, as all of the others because they are so carefully intertwined. And so I just truly hope for safety for all of our babies and for all of the children in Indianapolis over the next several weekends as we have all of these big events taking place. Keep an eye on everyone and take care of yourselves. And, um, with that, our meeting is adjourned and we'll see you next month, thank you.